All right. I know the city clerk's getting the attendance together. City manager, could you please take the role, please?
Sure. Alderman Pierce, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Sufferden, Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Here.
All right, terrific. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, April 15th, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. We have eight of our nine aldermen. I heard from Alderman Braithwaite, who is on the east coast and flying back. And if you've seen the weather, the weather on the east coast is pretty bad right now. So he's trying to make it back, but not sure if he'll be here. I also know Alderman Ruth Simmons may have to leave at some point during this evening's meeting. But we do have quorum, and we appreciate everybody coming out. We've got several items on the agenda. The first thing that I would like to do is recognize an organization here in town that is celebrating their 125th anniversary. Woo-hoo! That is 125 years, and that is Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church. So we are really pleased to celebrate them. And if they wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, I've got a proclamation I would like to read. As you all know, I don't read all the proclamations that we issue here in Evanston, but some are particularly special, and I just want us all to recognize them. All right. Whereas Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church was organized in the spring of 1894, when the second Baptist church granted letters to nine women and six men, who met from home to home until a mission was formed and a hall was rented to conduct services. And whereas the present Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church edifice was established in 1904 on the property at 1113 Clark Street, which was acquired in 1902, and whereas Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church is the third oldest African-American church in the city of Evanston, Illinois, and whereas Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church, over the years, has grown and prospered consistently and is an integral part of our community, and whereas Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church owns one of the only three pipe organs of its kind that was installed in 1922, and whereas with the purchase of the property at the corner of Clark and Ridge, Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church became the owner of the north side of the 1100 block of Clark Street. And whereas the city of Evanston wishes to recognize the significance of this observance of this anniversary, now therefore I, Stephen Howard Haggerty, the mayor of Evanston, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 21st through April 28th, 2019, as Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church Week in the city of Evanston, and wishes to recognize and honor the significance of this observance of this 125th anniversary. So congratulations, everyone. I'm not going to read this proclamation, but I do want to recognize that this is National Community Development Week, and Community Development Block Grants: Communities on the Rise. And we're recognizing that April 22nd to the 26th. I can't stress how important CDBG funding is to communities all over the country, in particular our own. We get about $2 million a year in HUD grants. It goes towards different community development activities, including housing, economic development, and some social service programs that we provide around here. So lots of folks here in the city of Evanston work on these programs. Lots of the members of the council up here help direct and allocate that funding, and that is occurring this week. Excuse me, I guess that's occurring next week. I'm a little ahead of myself. With that, city manager, do you have any announcements?
I do not.
All right. City clerk, any announcements?
Just one announcement this evening, and the one announcement is an update to our elections. Today was the last day for mail-in ballots and provisional ballots to be counted, and so we have an official result in Ridgeville. So there is no longer a need for a coin toss. Mr. Dan Coyne has been elected as the third commissioner for Ridgeville, so that election has been decided.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and congratulations, Dan Coyne, over there, who is a regular attendee who videotapes oftentimes for Facebook Live, our meetings. So thank you for your service, Dan. We're going to now move on to public comment.
We have 13 -- I'm sorry, we have 19 folks signed up for public comment.
Are you going to be able to send me the list?
Yeah, or I can just read off the names.
If you could write the names down on this piece of paper for me, that would be good, so I can read them off.
Sure, I can just read them off.
If you could write them on a piece of paper, that would be good. I'd like to read them off. All right, well, while I'm waiting, why don't you give us the first three names of folks who can come on up?
Rose Johnson, James Engelman, and Tina Payton.
Okay, great. And just so everybody knows, we've got -- how many did you say total?
We have 19.
19, so I'm going to ask everybody if we can keep remarks to two minutes tonight. That should get us in the 45 minutes. Clerk Reed will keep track of the two minutes, and I'm asking Mr. Bob Kowitz if he'll just keep track of the entire 45 minutes, which, just so people are aware of the rules, we set aside 45 minutes in total, and it says the council meetings will start at that point. So we're trying to get to that these days. So welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Continuing from last week, Foster Center Our Place is a diverse group of 28 people representing building tenants, residents of the 5th Ward, other wards of Evanston and Skokie, and alumni of Foster School and Community. A significant part of our group is several young people with knowledge and expertise in various areas such as building maintenance and repair, finance, education, and early childhood education. What is special about them is that they are Evanstonians who benefited from our school districts and community. They consider this effort a means of giving back to their community. Some of the things that we've done, we have an engineer's assessment of the repairs and maintenance of the building necessary to keep the building sound with a 10-year plan for development. The engineer who did the assessment and proposal for repair and maintenance of the building worked at greatly reduced rates because of one of the people in our group. We have a verbal agreement with the Evanston Community Foundation to be the fiscal agent or to receive contributions from Foster Center Our Place, and we've also obtained 501(c)(3) status, meaning your contributions will be tax deductible. We've collected funds from our group for ongoing costs. Our group has met with the mayor, our elected representatives in state and federal government, and other potential supporters. We've talked with our school superintendents and citizens of the 5th Ward. We have obtained the pro bono services of a major law firm. We have consulted with advertising and public relations firms. Many hours have been spent exploring many avenues of possible assistance for securing and maintaining the Foster School building. We have met with many potential donors who are interested in supporting this work. I'll be back till I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. James Engelman, Tina Payton, then Ed Moran.
Hello, I'm James Engelman from the 5th Ward. I like -- I was looking at Facebook, and I noticed about the dogs have leeches on. I agree with that. And plus, the people should have bags for picking up their things. And it's very reasonable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James. Tina Payton, and then we've got Ed Moran, then Meg Welch.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, city clerk, and city council. My name is Tina Payton. I just had a comment. As you know, I go to a lot of meetings at city council and ward meetings, and I know that we talked about last week, giving respect to the council members and the city manager and all city employees, but we need respect too. I was at a meeting last week, and one of the aldermen told someone that they do not need to speak because the item that they were talking about was not on the agenda. The agenda should be about what we want. When you have ward meetings, this is to listen to our concerns, and we should be represented by you guys. And then we were told by you, Mayor, that we elected you all, and you all are making decisions based on what you think is best for us. But why do you think people come here mad? Because you're not listening to us. And when we go to a ward meeting, this is an opportunity to talk more than two minutes or one minute. So we should be led to speak about things that are not on your agenda, or if you're not getting a present from a developer. Because this is what's going on. You're only listening to developers that are giving you presents. You need to listen to us.
Thank you, Ms. Payton. We've got Ed Moran, Meg Welch, Jennifer Shader.
Good evening. I'm here on Harley Clark. And although, as I understand it from the proposal that's before the council tonight is a first step and a long step, but quite frankly, I think the council needs to give serious consideration to going in a completely different direction. And to direct that direction being to somehow make that piece of property more amenable to the entire community. People have tried to resurrect Harley Clark, so to speak, and they've failed. That failure will continue, in my opinion, for a long, long time. The agenda item here talks about a period of time of six or seven months to get somebody on board to work on Harley Clark, and it won't work. It'll be a waste of time. It's a beautiful piece of property. Could be a promontory point, looking out over the lake. People have -- I've read in the papers that people have come forward offering their services free to the city to deconstruct Harley Clark. In my opinion, the city should accept that offer. It should allow Harley Clark to be removed. It should open up the site so that people have a beautiful vista of the lake. I can see some wonderful activities that could be engendered after that. You could develop it for concerts. You can develop it for plays. You could develop it for activities for kids. All of those things would be much more important, in my estimation, than the Harley Clark mansion is. The Harley Clark mansion is nothing but a purveyor of controversy, year after year, decade after decade. It should stop. You should accept the offer of the people to come out, tear it down, start it over again, and we'll have something really nice to be proud of. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ed, and thank you for your prior service to the city as an alderman. Meg Welch, Jennifer Shader, Carla Sutton.
I'm here to speak to the agenda item about city goals. It wasn't until I had time to peel back some of the layers of Robert Crown Plan funding recently that I became concerned and disappointed, frankly. If you haven't done a deep dive into it, I mean a deep dive, I invite you to. I don't oppose a new Robert Crown, and I understand there will be included programs and facilities to benefit vulnerable populations. We can have a facility to be proud of. It's the cost of this plan, and responses from some of you last Monday were not convincing. Let's be clear, there is no financial imperative to issue these bonds next Monday. We can tell there are funds left from the last issue, and not issuing them next week will not result in a financial hit to the city from a contract breach. Change orders are possible. We need a community conversation on this. This is the largest capital expenditure in the city's history. Some of you who voted to sell the library parking because of their concern over cuts to city funding for vulnerable populations are now stating they support the bond sale for the $54 million Robert Crown. This does not seem consistent with voting for something that will obligate city finances so that funds will not be available for human services. We are already running a $7 million deficit this year, and let me remind you what was on the chopping block last fall, or up for consideration. We considered cutting summer food for children. We did cut victim advocates, eliminated the public health educator, did furloughs, I understand that were snuck in, but we didn't consider Robert Crown debt. That was not on the priority budgeting as an option. Why not? This speaks to the morality of our budget. It is not okay to fund this project on the backs of our vulnerable residents by raising fees, property taxes, and selling city property. Show us a good faith effort to lower the cost of this project, and no, we're not going to take you at your word.
Thank you, thank you, Meg. Next up, Jennifer Shader, Carla Sutton, Doreen Price.
Jennifer Shader, 7th Ward. Good evening, Mayor, city manager, alderpeople. I wanted to ask you guys to please, this evening, as you're discussing the RFP for Harley Clark, to take a few things into consideration as you're discussing the approval. I wanted to address an issue that Judy brought up a few weeks ago regarding the costs, the recent cost, current cost. Landmarks Illinois has reiterated their offer at no cost to the city, which I know we rarely get something that is an offer to the city at no cost, to bring in a select group of expert architects, engineers, and other professionals to get updated numbers both for rehab and stabilization on the property, again, at no cost to the city. I think that would be a great asset to have in the RFP for people who are using. You could separate the wheat from the shaft, allow people to know ahead of time. I know sometimes people will bring in their own experts, but this would allow you to give people a starting point. Additionally, Landmarks Illinois has a huge knowledge base of historic tax offerings that could also go into the RFP that would be helpful for respondents. I'd ask that you add clarity to the acceptable community uses. Currently, it says garden. I believe the Jen's Jensen Gardens are also listed in there, and something that needs to remain public, so there's some disparity there. It also says class singular. I would certainly hope that that doesn't imply that one class is an acceptable community use. I'd ask that you please consider extending to a 12-month time period, which will allow a little bit more time and an unrushed process, and also allow a full fundraising cycle. I'd ask that you please define more clearly that all of the land surrounding the buildings will always remain as a public open space. I'd ask that you create or add a matrix for the review process so that the responses know what they're being judged upon. Some samples would be an equity cultural component slash impact, revenue generation for the city, best use for overall complex, the Lighthouse Landing Complex. And lastly, I'd ask that you remove sale from the RFP altogether. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We've got Carla Sutton, Doreen Price, then Misty Whittenburg.
Good evening, Mayor Haggerty, Clerk Reed, city manager Bobowitz, and our respective aldermen. I'm Carlos B. Sutton, 5th Ward resident. I'm speaking tonight in my comments because I am very concerned about the rudeness of some elected officials in an attempt to intimidate and suppress citizen commentary. I am concerned that the citizens are not being effectively represented by their elected officials and are looking to their own self-interest. The attempt to silence and subjugate citizens will not be accepted and will be resisted by any means necessary. If you want respect, then show respect. Thank you, Alderman Simmons, for your vote on Robert Crown and not trying to stymie citizen participation and comments in our ward meetings. Yes, they're hot, but they're needed. Thank you for the courage to sit there and allow us to talk. I just wish other wards would be that effective in not trying to silence citizens, but giving them the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Chief Cook, for your sensitivity to citizens and not overreacting when people are making emotional commentary at city meetings and the police are called saying it's disorderly conduct. Thank you, Chief, for your strength and your sensitivity to a people who have been marginalized and set aside for years to feel this is the only effective way that they can reach the public and have their voices heard. Thank you. And to the members considering Harley Clark, I am adamantly opposed to any consideration of any attempt for Harley Clark that does not reflect full citizen participation. Let me remind you, 2nd Ward, 82 percent. 5th Ward, 83 percent. I may not agree with the words you say, but I will defend your right to say it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Do we have Doreen Price here? Oh, yeah, come on in, Doreen, I didn't see you. Okay, Misty Whittenburg, and then Ally Hartnett.
Well, I couldn't ask for better presenters preceding me. Mr. Sutton and I are full agreement, just different words, and my words are more familiar to some people and less familiar to others, as the same with regard to him. So we're both talking about the same thing, but you're going to hear different language, and I want you to understand that. That's the perspective of equity versus equality, and those issues have to be sorted out, and they're difficult. And again, I commend Robin Cicely and the chief for behaving in ways that are inclusive. I'm from 7th Ward, and I'm there, and the people welcome me in the 5th Ward. And it's partly because of Robin's leadership, also because of her commitment that anyone who believes in doing some good for anybody in her community is good to go. So thank you, Robin. And that's how we all should feel, and I think as this expands in terms of sensitivity and equity, that this movement that you started at this dais is huger than you ever imagined in the most effective way. And the frustrations that I sense, I have too. I just express them differently. But when I'm at home, do I scream? Yay! Yes, I do. So I'm going to quickly read what I wrote, just part of it. I sent it beforehand, like a half hour beforehand, to council, and just a second here. Okay, so what I do is I go back to Wally's memo, because there's nothing in the agenda in terms of substance, except his memo indicating that we're going to be discussing some equity issues in light of these important concepts, actually. And there's no data. Staff will present information on. In addition, staff will present an open data report. The report will detail the city's new form data governance team. How is this aligning data with developmental city goals and industry standards? Industry standards, how do they apply? What are they doing in there? And providing a what works cities assessment? None of it. No data in the packet. Okay, how am I supposed to review and give you some sort of positive input on something that you have information on, I don't have information on, and I'm supposed to come up with ideas, which I want to? The whole community wants to, they're begging. So that preempts what you're trying to do. And this note basically says if you want equity, there's a way to do it, and it's both in terms of how you do it, your modus operandi and your objectives. So that's the short of it, which you probably prefer.
Thank you, Doreen, and thanks for sending that beforehand. Misty Whittenburg, Ally Hartnett, then Bennett Johnson.
Hi, Misty Whittenburg. I'm speaking to the proposed citizen comment guidelines and, more broadly, the increasing restrictions we put on public speech so far this year. These were intended to deal with longer and more contentious meetings, but they all target the public's participation. Limitations to our time to speak, how we choose to use or share that time, they all presume these issues stem with the public. What's not being addressed is why we have so many speakers coming and why they're so frustrated. Effectively, we're just being penalized for being frustrated. You're trying to treat the problem by suppressing the symptoms. And listen, I don't doubt that public comment is uncomfortable for you. You might come away feeling bruised, but let's give this some perspective. You're not victims of this situation. You have all the institutional power. How you use and misuse your privilege of your office has significant impact on the public. What citizen comment impacts is your unimpeded enjoyment of that power and privilege. You're so focused on harsh tones that you perceive as threatening that you're missing the very real and measurable threats you pose when you refuse to address resident concerns, facts, and realities, because that's what's driving the number of public speakers. That's what's fueling the intensity. Most of public comment now are just reiterations of the same unanswered issues. Residents are telling you that we're not being heard, that we're being shut out of the public process, and your response was to further constrain our opportunity to participate? So the outcome of that is not going to be decorum and order. That's just not a thing that happens in millennia of history. You're not advancing stability, you're driving civil disobedience. What you're asking is for us to accommodate a system in which you've continually disregarded the public's interests, and the law is protecting those interests. And does anyone want to acknowledge that last week, and I know you weren't all here, that there was a discussion where more consideration was given to potentially inconveniencing a donor's game schedule than on super-serious ramifications to the public and public services that we have to keep fighting to save, admit an increasing deficit? Alderman Simmons, you should acknowledge that. You were the only one who pushed back. So if you want us to respect the system of public service, you have to serve the public respectably, and that is a change that has to come with you. You can't just keep limiting the ways we can participate. You're going to get nowhere. You're exasperating the problem you're trying to solve. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Misty. We've got Ally Hartnett, Bennett Johnson, then Charles Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, alderpeople, and city clerk. I'm Ally Hartnett from the 2nd Ward. I support the preservation of Foster School for the community. I support council goals to enhance community development and job creation citywide and to ensure equity in all operations. I believe mutual respect is something that we should all strive for. And I bet you're not surprised that I'm here to talk about Harley Clark. As a representative of Save Harley Clark, which represents 80-plus percent of your constituents, it is incumbent upon you to consider the shortcomings of the RFP as it is currently written. Most strikingly, it reads like a real estate ad, intending to sell the buildings, which would be in stark contrast to the overwhelming vote in November 2018 to save the building for public access. We contend that the referendum was not vague or misleading. People knew what they were voting for, and they do not want you to sell the only public house on the lake. We do appreciate the parts of the RFP that allow for multiple dates of public access to the buildings and the two community meetings that have been planned. We appreciate the council members who have stressed that there should be community voices in the group who evaluates the responses. However, the RFP does not specify how the evaluation committee will be selected, and I hope that the city will consider goals of equity and inclusion, much like the Harley Clark community meetings have demonstrated already in the three community conversations that I've heard. We hope that those community voices will be proactively representative of all stakeholders in the city of Evanston, including different races, languages, ages, ability levels, country of origin, socioeconomic status, and more. Asking our elected officials to listen to the will of the people is not being aggressive, attacking, or being oppositional. It's the opposite of oppositional, actually. It's asking you to collaborate with us, to listen to the will of the people. The referendum results were not just a suggestion, they were a very strong statement, and not one that can be ignored easily without consequences. I propose a new paradigm about Harley Clark, because it does not need to be a purveyor of controversy. How about we try to approach it in a positive manner? Just as we must do to save Foster School, to increase affordable housing, and to make Evanston the most livable city, let's be creative. Let's harness the immense talent pool of our city, and let's make this work. To make a permanent sale of Harley Clark would be a failure of imagination and will not ever be forgotten. Please strike the sale of Harley Clark buildings from the RFP. Thank you for me and the Thank you from me and the twenty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-six people who voted to save Harley Clark. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Bennett Johnson, Charles Smith, and Bob Cruz.
Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, Manager Bobowitz, and members of the council, I'm here on a couple of matters. Number one, if the RFP for Harley Clark, they talk about sale, but it's very vague terms. If the whole thing could be put up on an auction block, and the highest bidder would get the deal. So I think it's important to define the terms of sale, whether it's the appraised value or something, but it's not clear. The other thing is that the public component is also vague. As most of you know, the lake has been a white haven, except for the short time I lived there, for many, many decades. And unless we want to change that, we have to do something about the public component and make sure that every citizen of Evanston has access to this particular site. The other thing I want to mention is this thing about job creation. The large projects that are going on in the city of Evanston now, Robert Crown, the Albion Building, and the building on Emerson Street, have little or no minority contractors. And also, very few minority workers. Now, the thing that makes a city strong is that everybody has an opportunity to succeed, get a good job, get a good contract. And it won't happen in a racist -- you have to remember, you live in a racist society. We don't -- this is what this is all about. So the city has to take affirmative action to make sure these things happen, not just put a clause in an ordinance that says we should have twenty-five percent. I mean, let's take affirmative action. So those are the two things I'm concerned about, and I hope you consider them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We've got Charles Smith, Bob Cruz, then Audrey Nefeneger.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Manager, City Clerk, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I would like to simply refer back to Jennifer Shader, Ally Hernan, and of course Bennett. I'd like you guys to reread at least a couple of times everything those three people just said, because that's what I wanted to say to you. I will add one additional thing. It's not often that you get a clear message from the community on about any issue. This is your opportunity to respond to a very clear message. There was a referendum from the community that instructed what the community expected from this situation. I implore you to use your heart, use your brain, and use some courage and approach this project with an acceptance of what the community wants and not what the administration of the city may think is necessary. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Let's see, we've got Bob Cruz, Audrey Nefeneger, and then Madeline Dupree.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. You have a hard job in front of you, and we'd like you to listen to the community. And I'm speaking -- I'm not going to -- I can't repeat everything that everyone's already said about the Harley Clark, but I'd like to add that I represent only one of three thousand eighty people besides myself and Alderman Havel that would like to be here and speak in the one second that would be allowed for us to speak, to say that we'd like you to listen to the community and make this thing work over at Harley Clark.
Great. Thank you, Bob. We've got Audrey Nefeneger, Madeline Dupree, and then John Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. It's lovely to see you again. Thank you for your infinite, or not-so-infinite patience with the Harley Clark issue. I just wanted to say a couple of things, and the main one is that I very much hope that you won't sell the building. I think it's important for future Evanstonians, not just the ones you have right now. And especially watching Notre Dame burn today, I think that our buildings are so important to us. While Harley Clark is certainly not a beautiful medieval cathedral full of art, it nevertheless is a place of great value to many people. And so I hope that you'll retain it for the community and that whatever you may decide, whatever uses you may put it to, that it'll be here in the future for Evanstonians to come. I also wondered if in this RFP, perhaps you could include a consideration that whatever use the building is put to, that it should somehow benefit people from all the wards, that there should be some way of being inclusive in that way? Because while I tend to think of Evanston as block by block, place by place, things that got torn down, things that used to be there, each ward really does, as you very well know, much better than me, have its own personality and character. And it would be very interesting to me if whatever you choose was a use that was able to be multifaceted in that way, that it could attract, not just include, but actually beguile and be interesting to people from all the wards. So that's really all I wanted to say, but thank you for your patience in the interesting process to come.
Thank you, Audrey. All right, we've got Miss Dupree, and then John Kennedy, and then Emily Guthrie.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, home folks. Okay, I have three or four items to say here, real quick. The old foster school on Dewey, the library on Simpson, where's the donations? Where's the pledges? I'm going to speak for the Yellow Pages. Stop in the name of love. Please, stop. Put these items on hold, discuss them, let the people talk, hear from the people. Chief Cook, wherever you are, I want to thank you. I want to thank this Chief Cook for doing what he do best, I guess. I have seen the difference in his officers and our officers here. Keep up the good work, Chief Cook. Lastly, a quote, "The truth will always be controversial." I just prefer not to hide from it. I don't know if Wally gave permission for this to be up here. Residents, City Clerk, City Mayor, the rest of you. I'm saying this because my two little grandchildren out there, Leila and Amaya, I want them to learn what their grandmother is doing. Fight for your rights. Fight for their rights, even if they get emotional. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Dupree. John Kennedy, Emily Guthrie, then Darlene Cannon.
Mr. Mayor, City officials, and Alderpeople. First off, the lady that just preceded me was talking about her grandchildren. It's very much a part of what the Harley Clark vision could be. What I'm here to talk about is a few key items on how this thing could work. You've got an RFP, there's some issues about sale and that process, but I'd like to be more specific. First off, you've got an opportunity here to build something unique. You've got a gorgeous house on a lakefront that has its own beach, that has event space, and that can be used by the entire community. It's a community home, not a community house. Secondly, a substantial portion of the community have already shown that they can participate and help the process. There's been three meetings, well-attended, with ideas and speakers. There's been the first of several cleanup days of volunteers. This is all evidence that the community is willing to put some time, energy, and effort into making this building livable and accessible. Third, we should take advantage of this space this summer. There's a huge park, there's thirty-five thousand people that come to the beach every year. You could have food trucks a few nights, you could have events in the evening. Heck, Circus Arts has an outdoor gymnasium built. You could have a night at the circus. Invite the community. These are ideas that need one thing, the cooperation of the city government. We need to be working with the people, they need to say yes instead of no, and they need to move, you know, help and encourage a process of utilizing this space sooner than later. Finally, or a couple more points, real quick. All right. The RFP needs a good citizens' review board. You guys can appoint people from every ward of the city to participate reviewing the RFPs that you receive and making a recommendation. There's clearly some guidance that you can do. It has to be sustainable, it has to somehow be affordable, so on and so forth. Finally, there's -- we urge the city to take advantage, or I urge the city to take advantage of the Landmarks Illinois Free Rehab. Imagine if we did a first phase, just the first floor. Get the building open, get it used, then figure out how to do floors two and three. These are incremental concepts that we can move forward with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Emily Guthrie, Darlene Cannon, and then Patrick Donnelly is the last speaker today. Let's see. Okay, all right, so welcome, Darlene.
Good evening. First of all, I want to say that I'm for saving foster school, and I disagree with the proposal to sell Harley Clark being presented tonight. The referendum stated that over twenty-seven-plus-thousand citizens who wanted a community use in the building and the property being owned by the city of Evanston, please vote no. Lastly, in regards to Robert Crown, the decision to raise taxes based on accepting the Robert Crown bonds has an immediate and concrete impact on the cost of housing and rents. You will have to decide where you stand regarding the rights to affordable housing in Evanston. The moral revival stands here in the council chamber, and what are the decisions you make and what decisions you make on whether you will support or hurt the most vulnerable citizens living in this town? Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene. All right, and Patrick Donnelly.
Hello, everyone. I don't have anything big or deep to say about it. I moved to Evanston because I was standing in the parking lot with my wife, and we just needed a place, a spot to park while we were talking about buying a home. And I said, "What is this place?" And someone told me it was the art center. And I said, "Wow, any town that keeps an art center on the lake for kids to use and for families to enjoy is the town I want to live in." And over this time, for four years now, we've talked to so many people who have done adaptive reuses for homes, and they've showed us so many ways to do this, for it to raise money, to do it the slow way or the fast way. And I just think it would benefit the community so much to have that place, to not sell it, but to figure out a plan and just work together. No more yard signs, no more RFPs, just something to think about. It's an asset, and I think the future generations would thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Patrick. And thank you, everybody, as always, for coming out and speaking so eloquently about a variety of issues here in Evanston. We're now going to turn to the agenda for this evening.
Where they signed up?
I don't think she was here to sign up.
Is that Ms. Giles?
Yeah, Ms. Giles.
All right, come on up, Ms. Giles. Just moving forward, everybody, I'm going to need you to sign in on these sign-in sheets, okay, that Clerk Reed keeps.
I'm sorry, that's the reason I didn't sign in. But I know that when we come to the city council and we have a question, we are not -- it's not for the people on the dais to answer. We refer to go to the meetings, the board meetings. And when we go to city property as citizens to ask city employees to answer a question, I don't believe that we should be told that this is a personal matter, a personal -- they're in charge, and that the person who is a guest, I think we're all guests, or we're none of us guests, if we are here because we're on city property speaking with city employees. And when you ask a question and that question is told that that is an argument, I don't know where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. All right, and thank you, everybody, for speaking at public comment. We're now going to move on to the special orders of business. This is a special order of business meeting. We have several items. The first item's SP1, request for proposal nineteen-dash-twenty-nine, sale or long-term lease of the Harley Clark mansion and coach house, which is at 2603 Sheridan Road. Staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to approve the RFP for the sale or long-term lease of this property, commonly referred to as Harley Clark. The request for proposal will commence on May 16, 2019, will be open for nine months with a deadline for proposal submissions by 2:00 p.m. on February 20, 2020. This is for action. Is there anyone that would move this? In order to talk about it, we need to move it. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Okay, so this item's up for discussion. I believe, City Manager, that the city has -- wants to make some remarks initially.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Suzy Hall, the executive assistant in the city manager's office, is here. She's been working with Erica Starlee, the assistant city manager, to prepare this document. As I think you know, Erica is on a well-deserved vacation, so in Erica's absence, I've asked Suzy to come present what we have put together, and we're really happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the presentation.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Suzy Hall, executive assistant to the city manager. I'm here to present the new request for proposal for the Harley Clark mansion and coach house. On March 11th of this year, city council approved moving forward with the request for proposal. As directed, the request for proposal will be open for nine months, beginning May 16, 2019, and last date for submissions will be February 28, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. So the request for proposal will include a sale or a long-term lease of the mansion and/or the coach house. So they can be two proposals separately, working together. Please note that the land under the property will remain owned by the city. The new request for proposal will be looking for individuals or organizations that are profit or non-for-profit. The lessor or purchaser will be asked to put substantial renovations into the property but retaining the historic character of that property. They will also be asked to address any parking issues that may arise, and they will also be asked to include a public component. So this could be a cafe that the public could come into, a museum, classes, meeting spaces, whatever. We'll see what they offer. They will also have to review the public space area, the recreation area around it, and protect and maintain the Jensen Gardens. So after this has gone out, we will be scheduling meetings, several meetings, as you can see. So there'll be tours, three tours a month, two to three tours a month, I should say, between June and October of 2019. They'll be from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on a website, which I will get to later. You'll be able to request a time to come in for that tour. In addition, there'll be community meetings for proposers to come in and present their ideas to the community and get some feedback if they so wish. And those will be August 6 and November 5 at 6:00 p.m. in the parasol room here in the civic center. The last meeting will be a pre-proposal meeting. It is not mandatory, but it is a way for proposers to come in and ask any last-minute questions to the city, and that will be on January 22 at 10:00 a.m. here in the civic center. And finally, we prepared a brochure that can be distributed throughout the community, reaching out and just highlighting the area that we have here, highlighting the mansion, the coach house, and providing the website, which is here. This will be the new website that people can go to to request tours, find out more information, see any pictures, ask questions, information regarding the request for proposal. And that is it.
Can you bring up the webpage?
Sure. The webpage. So, it's the cityofevanston.org/2603sheridan.
There it is.
So, here's, this is the website that's just for this request for proposal. So, as you click on each one, it gives you a little more information, gives you a gallery of pictures. And then, once we've approved the request for proposal, I'll be placing that on there as well.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Suzie. And we've got a few lights. We'll start this conversation. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fleming.
Suzie, I, I either didn't read it or I can't remember the answer. In terms of inspections for interested parties, architects or engineers, what is, one of the things I objected to in the first request for proposal is the duration we gave people to be in there. I think we gave them an hour or 90 minutes or something. What do we say this time?
I don't think we've come to a decision on, on length of time for the amount of time we can be in there.
I really, I really want us to give them, if, if they want, you know, a half a day to do that or a day, I really want us to give them all the time they need. Not anything exorbitant, like a week or anything, or two days, but they need all the time they need.
Okay. I mean, yeah, with the, the amount of days that we have to offer.
Yeah, if we have nine months.
Right.
And Alderman Rainey, actually, on the, the cover page of the RFP, it's from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on those dates. So, June 3rd, 4th, 5th, July 1st and 2nd, August 1st and 2nd, August 3rd, September 3rd, 4th, October 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on each of those days.
We can, they can do, use all those hours?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. That's very generous.
I think we, we've heard your concerns, and I think it's just a matter of having a staff member there to have the building open and keep an eye on it and...
Excellent. Super.
We've got Alderman Fleming, then Alderman Fisk.
Thank you. So, I had a couple of questions. I guess if the city manager has information regarding a couple of things that the citizens pointed out. So, the Landmark Illinois assessment offer, do you have any information about that?
Alderman Fleming, members of the council, Mayor Hagerty and I met with representatives from Landmarks Illinois, what, 45, 60 days ago, and talked in general terms. Their indication was they'd be happy to help. There were not any specifics beyond that. And so, that is where that offer resides.
Okay. And I think one gentleman maybe misquoted in saying they were offering to remodel the whole first floor, but I guess I would just like more information if they are willing to go in and do an assessment in terms of giving people an idea of what it might cost. But that, I don't want to hold up our process for that, but I mean, if that sounded like it was beneficial, if they're willing to just provide some information for people who might be interested and not have access to everything at one time. My other question was the matrix for review that was mentioned. So, I'm looking at the evaluation criteria, which is 7.0 here, but I lost the page here. Just the, the idea, I guess I would want to make sure that before we have people come forward and speak to the community and finalize things, I would like to have a matrix for them to understand what we're looking for. So, as they're making their proposals, you know, we're, we're being as fair to people as we can so they don't come forward with something we pretty much know we wouldn't put over there. And I think that would be good, too, so that if you're putting, if you have a nonprofit or for-profit, you have an idea of what we're going to be kind of rating these things on. And then, getting to that review that we would have, and I don't think this is fleshed out yet, but that we would have a variety of citizens. And when I say variety, citizens who would be, you know, maybe part of the Save Harley Clark and citizens who maybe, you know, would look for something that was for-profit. So, it's, it's very balanced to review, and it's not just a lot of people with the same opinion of the building usage who are feeling, you know, doing that review process. And then, my last question, or I guess my last comment for the community, is that I know that there was a referendum, obviously. And I can't remember at what point in time that started last year, that conversation, before we even got to, before you all got to referendum. But I guess my, my hypothetical question to you all would just be, if, if we go this process, and I know people don't necessarily like the idea or opposed to selling, and this is a nine-month process, that I would hope, from the time you all kind of started having these conversations till February, whenever this process ended, that that also gave you all enough time. You, you know the shape of the building. You've started having some conversations about what it could be used for. I imagine you have some kind of idea of your fundraising capacity. But that this RFP would not exclude you and would definitely not limit you from moving forward in whatever direction you would like to see used for the building. So, I would encourage you all, as you are thinking about what you envision for the building, that, you know, you use the same time, and you've even had potentially more time than some other people, to start making your plan and start looking at your fundraising. I mean, I think as a city, even though it's been sitting there for I don't know how long, at some point in time, we have to make a decision about this building, whether it's, whatever the decision is. And so, I would encourage you all to be very motivated and ambitious on your own plan for use of the building, because we, we just have to do something at some point. And I don't want to, again, discourage you all from participating in this process, but I would hope that if you see this as February 28th as the deadline, that you start some heavy fundraising or whatever it is, so that you also have a viable proposal that comes into play here.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Alderman Fleming, for bringing that up. One of my concerns about this has been there are, there are lots of, lots of focus on vision and not focus on how much money it takes to put into the building, even to get the doors open. So, I, I, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I, I think that's something that we need to have in the RFP is, is each, any successful respondent to the RFP needs to demonstrate that they have the available funds to do the, do the repairs and bring the building, at the very least, up to code. And so, I've got a couple of questions. Mr. City Manager, when you met with Landmarks Illinois, did they give any indication that there's any public money to help with the restoration? Or were they just offering to help determine, help update the costs for the building?
And I'll ask Mayor Hagerty to help me with my recollection of the last discussion we had with them. There was no offer of any kind of public dollars for extensive work. I, you know, certainly, they would like to be a part of a process to see the successful reuse of the building. And so, there were general terms such as that offered at the meeting. I know in previous presentations to the city council, they have talked, again, in general terms about studies or reports that might be helpful. But there was not a specific offer of dollars or a specific study, particular specific study offered. It was just a general, we would like to see the building rehabilitated, and we would like to be helpful. Mr. Mayor, I just would ask that...
Yeah, yeah, there was no, there was no specific money, although there, I, I thought there, they sort of alluded that if there was, it wasn't much, you know? We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars or anything like that. We're talking in the, you know, 10,000, you know, maybe 15,000. But, but yeah, that we would sort of have to come up. I mean, my, my takeaway from the meeting was if we wanted to use them in some capacity, we, the city, may have to come up with the funds, you know, potentially to direct towards Landmarks Illinois.
I'm, I'm sorry, could you just repeat? What did you just say that we might have to?
That we would have to, if we wanted to task Landmarks Illinois to do something for us on this project, that we would have to, you know, figure out how we're going to fund them. That was my, that was my takeaway.
Your understanding from your meeting with them?
That was, yeah. I would also just add that, you know, my experience, you know, with, you know, rebuilding, you know, buildings after things happen around this country, is that anyone that's going to come in and do that wants to come in with their own, you know, cost estimating team and technical team to do, to do that estimate. So, personally, I'm not quite sure what the value is if we had some, you know, Landmarks Illinois or some other third party come in and say, okay, this is what it's going to cost to renovate that. Because the reality is that whoever the proposer is or proposers are, they're all going to come in with their own technical teams and cost estimators.
Okay. Well, that, that means that we have to put that part of the project then off to when we select the respondent to the RFP. And then, we have another stage of the process to talk about the, the costs for renovations and whether or not they are prepared to meet those costs. That's, that's my guess, is what we're going to have to do. A couple of other questions. Was there any discussion with Landmarks Illinois about any help for, if the property is leased or purchased by a tax-exempt entity? Of course, there's no tax savings because no one's paying taxes, but was there any discussion about that?
No, we didn't. We didn't discuss that.
My, my other question is that in the packet, it says only the building set forth in this RFP, together with the adjacent Jensen Gardens. So, we're also selling or leasing the gardens with the stipulation that the successful person or entity is going to maintain the gardens? Is that, is, is the city manager's? Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
That's what's being proposed.
Okay. I, I, just a couple of things. I want to thank Alderman Moran for coming tonight and speaking. I wish you were here six months ago. But that's okay. We're glad to see you. So, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the process. I am concerned about how much money this house is going to entail to put it back into condition. And the reason why I'm concerned about that, Alderman Russ Simmons and I are working with landmark properties in our wards that require, in my case, on the borderline between the fifth ward and the first ward is Noys School. And Noys School is a successful, successful building. It was designed by Daniel Burnham. It needs $5 million worth of work. And I would love it if the community would join with us and figure out a way how to help all the tenants and the city pay for the renovations that that important landmark building needs. And the same is true with Foster School. So, we, we are quietly paying attention to this, but I want the community to understand that there are other landmarks in town that the city has been trying desperately to retain for public use. And I'm, I'm concerned about adding another one to that. But we'll see as the, as, if the RFP passes, if it, if, who responds to it, and how that might move forward. The last thing I will say is that I have watched the, the videos of the meetings, and I'm looking forward to the time when revenue is actually seriously discussed. And I think that time probably will come soon, but to date, I haven't heard it. And that's been, I think, the main stopping point in the past is just the amount of money. It's, as I said the last time, there's no lack of vision. But it's the, it's the money that a building of this size is going to take to renovate. And it, we may come back to, well, I know we're going to come back to that when we get the responses to the RFP. But it's a serious problem, and everyone needs to be thinking in those terms.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Nguyen, and then Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with some of the comments that have been made already. I do think that, that we should, I, I think we need to very much amplify the aspect of the public component that's part of this, describe it and provide more detail about what we mean by a public component. Because, you know, I, I think that, I don't, I want anyone who responds not to feel that having a picnic on the grounds once a year constitutes a public program or public involvement. So, I'd like to, us to expand that, given some of the, the long discussion that we've had over the, the mansion over many years, I mean, in terms of what, what would be an acceptable public component. I like the idea of a matrix that Ms. Shader presented. I think that's, you know, frequently, that's what we look at when we put, send something out to bid. You know, when we get it back, we look at what the matrix was in terms of the point values assigned. And I think that would provide a lot more information to anyone who's a, who wants to respond to this request for proposal. And I, I do think that, you know, community benefit, the ability to maintain financial solvency, and the ability to maintain the building. And then, another aspect that I think of is, so if, if we do, let's say we do a long-term lease on this. And what is the penalty going to be if someone doesn't fulfill all of these aspects? If they don't protect the building? We have to think about those things. If the public component falls apart after several years? So, I think we need to discuss what that aspect is. The other final point I'd make is that I don't think that we should have a sale provision in, in this. I think, you know, someone can, we can lease it for 25 years with two 15-year options or whatever length of time. A very long-term lease would provide something similar and actually give us, retain our ability to control what happens at the property. And because I, I think once we sell it, even if we have these provisions, it's going to require us to bring a lawsuit against whomever buys it if they don't fulfill these provisions. So, I'm not in favor of a sale. I think a long-term lease would be fine. And, you know, I don't remember the extent, I think the city does not like to lease anything for longer than 50 years. That was our policy years ago, so. But you can certainly have options to renew. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Alderman Nguyen. We've got a bunch of lights up here. I just want to add one thing, and I appreciate Jennifer Shader, who's here tonight, because I was thinking there was a, a letter, and I couldn't remember exactly when. Landmarks Illinois did send a letter to the city council and to myself back in January. I'm looking at it right now. Ms. Shader sent it to me. And they did offer, they said, "We again offer our assistance to bring a select group of expert architects, engineers, and other professionals to conduct an examination of Harley Clark's interior and exterior conditions to help identify an appropriate reuse and anticipated stabilization and rehab costs. We're happy to discuss additional expertise that may be needed as it relates to various uses." And Ms. Shader was communicating with them and said that they would offer that, that assessment pro bono. Okay, just so, just so folks know. All right. Let's go on. We've got Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Ravel.
Thank you. I think most of my points now have largely been covered. Going back to Alderman Fleming's point, I do think it's important to get a broad base of, of participation in the process. We had talked about conflicts issues in the, in the process itself, the RFP process. But I do think it would be important to make sure that whoever is signed, is tasked for the committee or committee, commission, whatever we're going to call it, the review group, that they not be associated with any given proposal. So, we'll have to ensure that there is no, you know, conflict in that sense. With regard to the sale, because we're retaining the land under the property, I tried to think of, I, you know, I tried to think of any use where it would make sense for a sale transaction to take place. I think the general understanding is we're going to be doing a transaction where somebody is not going to give us much money, like, you know, like a nominal amount per year lease kind of thing, in exchange for the really large capital investment in the property. So, that doesn't really lend itself to a sale transaction either. And then, the other challenge that I kind of had trying, trying to play that out is, let's say somebody buys the property, we own the land. Well, you know, what happens if they, you know, go out of business, they close or whatever that might be? It, it kind of, you know, if it's an individual, does somebody inherit the property? You know, it, it, it doesn't have a logical, you know, transition point, you know, after the purchase occurs. So, I'm, I have a pretty strong inclination to want to take the word sale out of there. It's not a traditional sale. And I don't, you know, if, if somebody can kind of come up with something that would, you know, on any, you know, universe, it would work, I'd be curious to hear that. But I can't really imagine anything that would, that would fit that. imagine anything that would fit that. So that's my inclination. I don't want to mislead anybody into thinking we're going to sell the property. It's clear in here, but I don't want to even go down that path. It's going to lead to a lot of conversations. It's obviously clearly led to a lot of anxiety in the community. That's probably unnecessary because I don't think that's generally the intention. Mayor, did you?
I just want to follow up because, I mean, you're in this business and everything else. I mean, I think when sale last time was added to that, it was wanting to craft a solution here where, yes, somebody comes, they may not be paying anything for the property, right? The use of it, but they're going to put $5 million, $7 million, whatever into the building. And how do we craft something? And I think that's why sale maybe was put in, that gives them assurance that, hey, you know, you are, you know, granted the right to control this mansion for the function that the city council approved for, you know, a significant amount of time so that they are, you know, getting, I say a return on their investment by capturing all of this money that they put in.
Right. And that makes all the sense in the world, but I think that's, you know, the long-term lease is intended to do that, you know, a five-year lease, 10-year lease or options, you know, if that's what they chose.
I would think it's got to be a heck of a lot longer than 15 or 20 years if you're having to put the kind of money in to rehabilitate that.
And I agree, but the sale has no end date. So, you know, so 50 years from now, you know, God willing, I'm here, but I don't think it's likely. But, you know, that's just going to be, it's a high degree of probability that that's going to be some kind of complicated problem. And even when it comes down to documenting the transaction, you know, I don't know, I can't imagine, you know, documenting something like that with, you know, with the intended kind of sale price. So.
Got it.
You know, that's my thoughts on that. I think, you know, having the Landmarks group come in makes sense. There's obviously no harm and there's probably just nothing but benefit. I think maybe I had another thought, but I'll just move on and let's see what other people have to say.
Mayor, could I just interrupt very quickly and provide a little bit of history? Years ago, Carbine Montessori School was leasing their current location from the city, which had prior to that been Family Focus originally. And then before that, it was a public elementary school, Miller School. And what the city did was we entered into a very long-term lease with them with potential options to renew for a low lease rental, a low lease amount because they put $2 million into the building. Ultimately, we sold it to them, but we sold just the footprint of the building and a small amount around it, maintaining all of the city park around it. But that was, the original way that we structured it was that they were going, they were going to take care of the building and they did a wonderful job for the first long-term lease period. And then they converted it and requested to convert it, but we sold them everything, but including, you know, the land, you know, a very small amount.
Okay, great. All right, we've got Alderman Ravel, then Alderman Fisk.
So just real quickly to go back to the letter from Landmarks Illinois, there is also a reference to the possibility of financial incentives. And they indicated that they have experts who could advise about whether any of these incentives might be applicable. So certainly wasn't saying, yeah, they know about grants, but that they do have some ideas that they would share with us. In terms of this RFP, I share Alderman Wilson and Alderman Wynn's concerns about the sale option and, you know, what recourse would we have if the purchaser didn't follow through with the proposed plan? Would we have to come up with the money to buy the building back or, I mean, just what would happen? I think it's very important to retain the public ownership of the entire property. And then also going back to Alderman Wynn's comment about the public component, and I do think we want to really make sure that we're talking about a significant public component of whatever the proposed use might be. And then just to refresh our memory about the wording in the referendum that was, as we know, received overwhelming public support. It was to preserve the landmark buildings and gardens for use and access as public property. So I think that's really the message that I would like to see in the RFP. And if, and that it would need that if I'm going to be supporting this.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Ravel. Alderman Fisk and then Alderman Rainey.
Thank you. Well, if that's the case, then I guess I don't see much difference between this RFP and the last RFP we sent out, to which we got one respondent. Mayor, I have been interested in your, what you've had to say about the sale of the property. And I've been concerned about the amount of money that someone is going to have to put into this building. And I think we can probably control the use of it through our, a deed restriction or some legal way of ensuring that the building is used the way we intended. I think in, well, going, talking about Northwestern and the way they've approached their, some of their properties, I mean, Royce Moore School is a good example of that, where Northwestern owns the land, but Royce Moore School owned the buildings. They could do whatever they wanted to in the buildings that were consistent with the school. And at the end of the time, the university, the lease, the 99-year lease was over and, as we know, Royce Moore then gave up its buildings, but it was their own choice and moved on to something else. So I'm just struggling with the idea of how we're going to ask someone to put $5 million, and I'm pulling this number out of a hat, approximately $5 million, could be more than that, into a building which they don't then own and which may be a lease for only 25 years. This is a lot of money. This is a large property. Again, ideally, I can see a family foundation interested in this house, interested in using it the way we want to and who want to continue that through several generations. And they're not going to do that with renewing a 25-year lease over and over and over again with, you know, with future councils. I think we need to give them some assurance. And frankly, as I said at the beginning, I don't see any difference than, if we don't do that, I don't see any difference than, between this RFP and the last RFP. So I think including sale in there is appropriate. It may turn out to be better than we thought. It doesn't include sale of the underlying land, but it does give some assurance to the person who is putting the significant chunk of change into the structure.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Wynn.
Yeah, I certainly don't support selling the land. Absolutely not. A 99-year lease on the land is required here. However, I agree with Alderman Fisk. I don't see how we cannot sell the property. I don't see any difference in someone defaulting on a 25-year lease with two 25-year renewals than somebody failing or foreclosing or are having to foreclose on a sale of the property. It seems to me that you would, we argue all the time that people are more invested in the use of their building if they own it. And I feel very strongly about this. I don't see how we do not continue to have total financial and legal responsibility, no matter what a lease or contract says, if we are leasing that property. We will have financial and legal responsibility. We will have that. If we sell that property, we do not have that responsibility. I don't care how many lawyers we have on this council. If we sell that property, we're no longer the owners of that building. And that's what the, pretty much the referendum that passed said that, you know, little or no financial responsibility. And I believe that. And when that referendum passed, I believe that, you know, okay, I changed my vote. I voted not to tear down the mansion. I believe that we would reach a conclusion to sell the mansion and not have any more financial responsibility, but to save the mansion. We put out this RFP, maybe someone will come along and they will argue to us with a wonderful proposal that they only want to lease the building. Maybe that will be the finest proposal we receive. I will vote for it. Maybe the best proposal we receive will be one to sell the mansion to that person or that group or that organization. Then we'll choose that one. But let's give this, this time, let's do it right. Let's put it out there and select the best proposal. Let's not just have one proposal come back. I believe if we put a proposal out only for a lease that requires this kind of work, this kind of effort for a land that they're not going to receive for only a lease, we're going to get one proposal, maybe two. I just think we, and I want to remind everybody that the art center was public space. I would imagine that probably 90% of the population of the city of Evanston never was in that building while it was an art center. I believe that is true. Lots of people were in that building, but I don't think the majority of the city of Evanston was in that building. So public space is a wonderful thing. I always felt that it was very public, but, you know, public spaces, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have a rock climbing center at the recycling center. That's a public building. Somebody wrote to me today and said, "You absolutely must not sell any public building in the city of Evanston." I heard Alderman Wilson argue, "You must sell this public building." Now, tonight, he's arguing, "You cannot sell this public building." So, you know, I don't know. It depends on where that public building is and what that public building's going to be used for. And that public, you know, we've got to be consistent here.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Rainey. We've got Alderman Wynn, then Wilson, and then a couple others. Oh, you're off. Okay, good. So Alderman Wilson.
The point I had forgotten is I do like the idea of some sort of matrix so that people who are interested do have a sense of what, you know, we're weighing more heavily than other, you know, what points we're weighing more heavily than others. You know, with regard to, you know, to the sale lease, if we're selling the building, and correct me if I'm wrong, Corporation Council, but if we're selling the building, that's still going to have to go with the land lease because if we own the land and we sold the building, that goes on it, there's going to be, there has to be some arrangement for maintaining possession of the property. So, you know, Alderman Fisk, I understand what you're saying, but putting a deed restriction, the fixture on the land isn't the deeded property. So the deeded property is the land under the building. And it's going to require that lease in any event. So, you know, what we're, the point being, we're misleading someone if we're saying, "Buy the property," or "Buy the building," because we still own the land, there's still going to have to be a lease, there will still have to be lease terms, and at some point, that lease will end. So we're going to end up negotiating kind of the same thing. So I think for clarity's sake and for fairness in the process, it makes sense to just, you know, say, you know, lease, long-term lease, you know, as long as you want to come in with. And, you know, that makes sense. So whoever's coming in with this builds in their return on investment, understands what the timeframe is, but also has some assurance. You know, if we do this, sell the building, what happens if, you know, this land leases for 50 years, they've bought the building, they invested in it heavily, and 50 years down the road, somebody says, or the council says, you know, "We're not going to renew that lease," and somebody's going to be very unhappy because they've invested heavily in it and it didn't meet their expectations because they thought that they owned the building where they don't have any access to the property underneath it. So, yeah. So I think that's the only way to kind of, you know, do that clearly and fairly to the people who are interested in the process.
All right, thank you, Alderman Wilson. We got Alderman Ru Simmons and then Alderman Suffron.
Thank you, Mayor Hagerty. Shall the city of Evanston protect from demolition and preserve the landmark Harley-Clark buildings and gardens next to Lighthouse Beach for use of access and public property consistent with the Evanston Lakefront Master Plan at minimal or no cost to the Evanston taxpayers? The ward that I represent, 83% of them voted in support of this. So for me, there is an easy response to no, to anything that conflicts with what the residents voted on. So a sale doesn't work, but I also want to hold the residents accountable to the cost, the minimal or no cost to the Evanston taxpayers. So I think everyone here on council has already stated that to see some more effort in a plan of a viable fundraising strategy is going to be really important, but I'm going to be voting with the majority of the residents in the fifth ward on this one.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman. Suzie, you probably can sit down if you want. Thank you for standing there so patiently. Alderman Rainey? Oh, did you, maybe I forgot to turn it off.
Yeah, I did. But we would have to do a nine, if we sold the building, we would have to do a 99-year land lease. And I'm very familiar with the Drake Hotel land lease, and that is 99 years. And I know for a fact when the resetting of that land lease comes up almost every five years, for the next five years, the owner of the land lease has absolutely no control whatsoever over the functions of the Drake Hotel activity, absolutely none. And if you have any questions about that, you can ask John Buck. No control.
Thank you. Okay, all right. I have a couple remarks or points that I'd like to just raise only because I've spent so much time on Harley-Clark over the years. In terms of the dates to visit, I'm concerned that the June dates, if we're going to issue this May 16th, I think it was, I'm just concerned that we are going to need to have some adequate time to really market this property. I mean, to me, part of the reason we have a nine-month period on this is to really get the word out across the United States, okay, about this great property that sits on Lake Michigan and the opportunity that it presents. So if we're going to keep the June dates, I would just ask that we consider having a date, maybe, you know, another two or three days in December. I just think, you know what, it may take some people a little while to learn about this opportunity and I don't want them to be left out. Or I would just add, if we don't want to do that, that, you know, additional dates may be added at the city's discretion so that the city can do that. I just, I'm concerned about boxing ourselves in. Did you want to add something?
Aren't we having two to three per month?
We do, but they end in October, if I remember, if I remember right. So that's why I was suggesting. And the proposal itself isn't due until February. If you wanted to add something here, Suzie, come on up.
Well, I was just going to add, considering these dates, we stopped in October just because it starts to get cold. And although Harley-Clark is heated enough to keep the pipes from bursting, we weren't sure if people would be able to be in there for a long period of time, just due to weather.
All right.
So, I mean, we could, hopefully, we can go into November, December, but it snowed yesterday, so I think that was our concern.
I mean, you know, right. You know, maybe if we could consider just saying, you know, "At the city's discretion, additional dates may be added." I think that just gives us flexibility, the city flexibility. Secondly, I think that, I like what the city did. Somebody, I think, during public comments said, "I don't like it that it seems like you're selling the house." I tend to agree that we should just have, strongly have it in there that this is, you know, the city is willing to contemplate a long-term lease and make that very clear because they are going to be asked to put a bunch of money in here. But I do think that we need to market this property. I really like the website and what the city did there. My question is, you know, do we want to, you know, approach a Realtor here in Evanston and see about the idea that through their networks that they have, which are extensive networks, about using that to get the word out about this property? Again, it would not be for, you know, "Hey, this property is for sale for a single-family home. It says what it says." But I think there's an opportunity there and we ought to be really strategic about how we're marketing this property. how we're marketing this property. I think it has to be more than just an RFP that's on the city's website. In terms of the RFP review team, I don't think that needs to be articulated or laid out, you know, in the RFP or anything like that, but I do think it needs to be clear, and I do think that we ought to treat this like we do when we're hiring a new police chief or others in this town where we have panels, and that those panels should include, you know, residents, you know, some business people on that panel, obviously, technical city staff on that, on that panel as well. And I just want to, would want to make sure that the RFP, you know, articulates that, that that will occur. A lot of work has been done by different groups in the community since the council backed away from deconstructing the mansion and turning it into a park. I think these ideas that have been generated by the community, it may be valuable to add them as an addendum to the RFP so that any potential bidders can see that, hey, there have been a lot of community meetings. Here were ideas that were presented during these community meetings, just so, so that is out there and they can look at that. In terms of Landmark Illinois and the cost estimate, I would advise that we hold off on that. And the reason that I say that is, you know, I'm very, I'm just very concerned that, you know, if we want to have a truly independent cost estimate, that it's something the city should go out there and acquire, and I don't think we should spend the money to do that. And I am, I am concerned that, you know, we're getting to get into a situation where we have some real dueling cost estimates. I've seen this before when I chaired the Harley-Clark Advisory Board, where literally people would come and say, "Well, you know, Steve, we can fix this mansion for $170,000." That's, that's a true quote. And so, I'm just really concerned that if we, you know, go out of the gate and do this, I think we should let proposers, you know, come in with their teams. We're giving them adequate amount of time this time, which has been a problem in the past, and let them develop the cost estimates. And our team that we put together during these panels can review that. And those were, those were the, those were the significant comments I had. We've got Alderman Rainey's light, and then Alderman Wilson.
Mr. Mayor, I know there is, the majority opinion is that we should not sell this. I, you know, I'll go along with the majority opinion that we should not sell this. However, however, but Don, no wait, no wait. I have, I have some thoughts on that. What would be so, so bad about asking the experts out there, the people who give money and the people, and I don't mean the $25 and the $150 donations. I'm talking about investors and banks and, and people who can make a difference in making this building functional and safe, about what the smartest thing for us to do, to sell it or to lease it for 25 years, or to sell it. I just think we should do the smartest thing here. And I, I just, I just think off the top of my head, my gut feeling is that putting out a proposal which makes it, you know, that makes it firm, that we're going to lease it, we're not going to sell it, and we're going to have to reject any proposal that comes that says, you know, we want to buy it, we would reject it. Why can't we either put out a for-sale or a for-lease, or at least go out and do some farming and find out what maybe the best advice would be?
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Well, I was just, I was going to make a motion that we move forward with the request for proposal with two changes. One would be to add that the city has discretion to add additional dates, as you mentioned, Mayor, and that we take out the sale language and leave it with the lease and/or long-term leases.
I'm asking for a discussion about, I mean, you're just cutting me off of the knees here.
Okay, look, okay, so, I apologize, honestly, and I'm not trying, I thought it was more of a, you know, more of a, just a point you were making. So, to, to address that, you know, if we were to put the property out for a real sale, I think we could make a whole bunch of money. So, we said, sell the building and land.
That's on my interest, making a whole bunch of money. My point is, is saving this building with a really good use that would be a benefit to the community.
And so, you know, as, as I thought, I already explained before, any sale of the building itself is going to have to come with a land lease, which is going to be probably a similar term and duration.
The Drake Hotel's been a real failure, and so many other places are land leases. Look at downtown Evanston. Whole bunch of it is on a land lease.
There was a ski resort in Colorado where somebody forgot to send in their piece of paper in time, and then they pulled out the, you know, the ski resort. So, those kinds of things lend themselves towards the possibility of long-term problems.
We're talking about the city of Evanston holding the land lease. We're not talking about some, some mobster in downtown Chicago.
Okay. I'm not sure how that has anything to do with anything, but the sale doesn't make any sense to me. So, I would like to make the motion, maybe some other people have. So, I move that we approve it with those two changes.
I didn't hear what your changes were.
So, the two changes were that we take out the, the sale language, so it is lease-only, and that we add language indicating that the city has discretion to add dates for the viewing of the property. That's it. So, with those two changes, I move that we move forward with this request for proposal.
There is a second. All right. Seeing no second, we'll continue on with this conversation. We've got some additional lights. Alderman Fisk, then Alderman Revelle.
I just wanted to add on to what Alderman Rainey and Wilson were saying. If, if the House, the only thing I'm trying to do is get the best responses that we can and the most comprehensive responses. We've been through this before. Exactly what you guys are thinking about doing, leasing, we've done that. And if we expand a little bit, maybe we'll learn something. Doesn't mean we have to take it. But Alderman Ruth Simmons, to your point, it's still, even if we sold the house to, let's say, a family foundation, they would still have to use it according to the parameters that we've set. So, it would still have to be for public use and no public money and, or minimal or no cost and, and all of that. So, that, that could conform to that. I'm, I'm just frustrated because I don't see that we're going to end up with a different result, that we'll have spent nine months and be back where we were a year ago. And that doesn't seem to me to be fair or informative to either the council or the community. And when we first started talking about this, I guess my thought was, let's just open it up and see what ideas are out there for this property. Let's, let's, let's start from the position that we're going to keep the house, that the house, for whatever reason, is important to a lot of people in Evanston. So, what are the options that we have actually to keep the house? And now, we've narrowed it down to such a degree that I think we're hamstringing ourselves. And I don't think that, I mean, are we under any obligation, Mr. City Manager, if someone responds to the RFP, of taking the most responsive?
No, we're not.
So, I, I, that's, that's where I'm frustrated. And, you know, and I understand we're, we're trying to be responsive to the community. There's a good reason for us to be responsive to the community, but I don't think it's informative. And that's, that's a frustration to me because I don't think we're moving the ball anywhere.
Thank you, Alderman. We've got Alderman Revelle, then Alderman Suffertin.
Well, I guess I was ready to almost second Alderman Wilson's motion, except there was a third change that I wanted to recommend, and it kind of goes to Alderman Fisk's comments as well, because I really want us to beef up the idea of the public use. Because right now, the way the RFP is worded, it just talks about a public component, and it's, sounds pretty minimal. So, if we were to sell the building and the purchaser had a, some kind of small public component, that would hardly be satisfying the intent of the referendum. So, I guess I'll try a motion, see if we get, that we go, move forward with the RFP with the changes of additional opportunities to visit the property at the discretion of the city, that we are talking about a long-term lease and not a sale, and that the RFP make it clear that, that the public use aspect of, that what we're looking for needs to be a really significant portion of the proposal.
Second.
Okay. We have a few more lights on, and then maybe we can take a vote here. Alderman Suffertin?
I was just going to, this probably would have been better 20 minutes ago. If we are unwilling to look at selling the property under, under the building, we're probably precluding ourselves from a lot of not-for-profit and governmental entity uses that we should consider. So, I would hope that maybe we would reconsider and 11G say they would be willing to entertain selling the land under the building for a not-for-profit or government use. So, I would like to make a motion that we amend it to say that we would be willing to look at not-for-profit or governmental usage, and we would consider selling the property underneath the building for those two, but not for a for-profit entity.
I second.
Sure. We would be willing to sell the property entirely, the land under the building, to a government entity or a not-for-profit.
The land and the building?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Yeah. Again, Mr. City Manager, could I have some clarification on the, so the state of Illinois was one of, of the options of creating a state park on site, but they, that did not move forward because they, they would only do that if they had control over the land. Is that correct?
Alderman Fisk, members of the council, there was discussion about that. There was never a proposal of the, the more firm proposal was with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for use of the building. I think that they were looking to purchase the building, not necessarily the land, and it was for an office use, not for a.
Right. But there was a letter from, I believe there was a letter from Representative Gable to that effect regarding the state park. And if I had more time, I could, I could find that, that letter, but I believe that the stipulation there was that, and that would be operated solely for public use, but the concern there was the state would only entertain that if the land were deeded by the city to the state, and the city was not willing to do that. Is that correct?
Alderman Fisk, my recollection is that there was never a letter to us. I think that there was a letter written by Alderman, or excuse me, by Representative Gable. And then I believe a member of her staff came before the city council and further clarified that this was merely at a conceptual stage. So, I'm looking for others.
Right. I, I understand that, but the point that was in that communication from, from Robin Gable made the pursuing of that concept dependent on the sale of the land. I'm just trying to get where Alderman Suffertin is coming from, and I think it's a good point that he raises, that this is an option. It's, there's all sorts of, all sorts of stuff going on within that, but it is an option, and we probably should be thinking in those terms, or at least including that in the mix. We can't do that if we're only leasing.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. I think a public body may be forthcoming with, and I don't know, but maybe forthcoming with a proposal that would be in the, within the spirit of the referendum, would be an open public use, but they would want us to give them control of the land. And we can always say no, but I think it would be a mistake if our goal is to have the top of the funnel be as wide as possible to preclude that at this point.
Then why not also include the sale, just to consider all, consider all alternatives?
Yeah. We should look at everything. I think we should look at everything. But I don't want us to foreclose the possibility of a public body coming forward with a public use funding, and the condition would be that they would want the ownership of the land.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Suffertin. Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Rainey?
Well, maybe one of the last things in the world I would want to do is, is to sell one of our parks to the state of Illinois, so, because they've done such a perfect job of managing their assets. So, I have no interest in that whatsoever. And now, now I kind of feel like we're going a little bit backwards, but, you know, so I'm not sure what our last motion that was seconded was.
Alderman Revelle's motion was seconded.
By Alderman Suffertin. So, let's, I still got, I still got one more light on, and then maybe we can go to, vote on a motion here. Alderman Rainey?
Well, one of the things we're forgetting is when we get these proposals, and I think Alderman Suffertin's suggestion is very interesting because we have no idea what we would get, is that if we open this up and we have very specific, with the matrix, we, we know what we're asking for, but we open it up to lease or sale and make some other provisions in there, we, we will get a variety of proposals. We have the say of what we accept. This isn't like a contractor where we, we pick minority contractors, the responsive and responsible con, we pick the best proposal we want. We, we pick that. We choose it. Don't you want to see everything that's out there? People who want to give us the best we could possibly get? This is the way we do it. We don't say, "Oh, we're going to narrow it as narrowly, as narrowly possible." That's not what we should do here. What are you afraid of? I mean, we might find some wonderful people from God knows where who want to have this mansion and who want to give it back to this community. There's, there's nothing to fear here. Nothing. I think, I think we should open it to lease or sale and, and add Alderman Suffertin's provision.
Thank you.
You don't have to take the state of Illinois. You might get something even better than state of Illinois.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Okay. So, we'll see how many votes we have to take up here to get.
We have to take the vote on Alderman Suffertin's motion and then Alderman Revelle's motion afterwards.
Probably in that order.
Because it is an amendment to Alderman Revelle's motion. Was there a second? And there was a second by Judy Fisk, was there not? Okay.
No. Okay. All right. So, let's, let's make sure what we're voting on first, because you're right, Suffertin's wasn't, was an amendment, so.
What, can you restate it then? Because it seemed like a different motion altogether.
What I'm proposing is that we amend Section 11G and say that we are willing to sell the property underneath the building to a not-for-profit or public body.
Okay. Alderman Wilson?
And so, Alderman Fisk seconded that?
Yes.
And so, I'm just going to add that that's like a complete step all the way back to the beginning of the whole process. So, we might as well go back and dig out all the no-park sale signs and, you know, get those out of the basement. I just don't.
You can just vote no on it.
They didn't respond to Alderman Revelle's, so it wasn't, so how is it amended?
Well, because he couldn't have made the motion while her motion was on the floor. He might have been out of order, if that's what you want to say, but, or it's an amendment, or it's amendment to her motion, which would be in order.
I'm sorry, we can't hear what the discussion is over there?
Yeah, we can hear. Yeah.
I was asking, it didn't seem like that was an amendment to Alderman Revelle's motion. It seemed like it was an amendment to the orig, some parts of the original.
Well, it's because her motion was on the floor, and when her motion's on the floor, he can only amend her motion, or he was, as we said, out of order.
And the chair didn't tell him he was out of order?
No.
I did not.
And was he out of order?
Here's, 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 here's the thing. The, you know, people are making different things. Lights, a bunch of lights are on previously before people making things. So, let's, let's.
Yeah. Vote on Alderman Suffertin's motion, then Alderman Revelle's.
All right. Alderman Suffertin's motion, state it one more time, Alderman Suffertin, we'll get a second, and the clerk will take a vote on it.
My motion is that we amend Section 11G. My motion is that we amend Section 11G, property of the city, to state that the land under the mansion, we're willing to sell the land under the mansion to a not-for-profit or public body.
Is there a second?
Can you show your microphone?
Right, yeah, yes, I mean, it's all dependent upon there being a proposal from a public body or not-for-profit. We will consider that.
Okay, all right, city clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Yes, Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Wen?
No.
Alderman Bre, I'm sorry, Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
No.
Alderman Suffertin?
No.
Alderman Revel?
No.
And Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
All right, we have five noes, so that did not pass. Excuse me, what do I have here? I have five, I have five noes, so that did not pass.
And now Alderman-
Okay, so now I'm back to the original of-
Revel's motion.
Alderman Revel. If you want to state that, Alderman Revel, so everybody understands what the vote is.
That we amend the RFP to indicate that we will have other dates for tours, visiting the house at, at the discretion of the city, that we will not be selling the buildings, and thirdly, that we will be making it very clear in the proposal that we are looking for a significant public use for the building.
And there was a second on that.
Yes.
I'd like to call the question, I think.
No, no lights, okay.
Alderman Fleming?
Significant is vague, I know there's not much time to talk, but, I mean, significant is vague. I think if someone's going into this building, they need to know what we mean. Is that not correct?
I agree, it is kind of vague.
I mean, her, her amendment was that they have significant public use, and that is vague, is my comment.
Well, my suggestion, as you guys heard before, was just that we add an addendum to the, to it, articulating and capturing all of the statements that have been made at these community meetings, so at least they can see what, you know, residents here have been talking about for public use.
Yep. That would, that would be okay.
So, you're amending?
Could, could you all speak into your microphones?
Sorry, are you amending Alderman Revel?
Um, yeah, so the, my third-
Yeah, we do, we do need to, we do need to take a vote.
Okay, so no.
Alderman Fisk? Alderman Wen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Aye.
Alderman Suffertin?
Yes.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
And Alderman Rainey?
No.
All right, so the I, what was that?
The I's have it.
I's have it, five, three. Okay, that passes five to three. Okay? Anything else on this, on these RFPs, or we're, we'll move into the next item? Okay, Alderman, Alderman Ruth Simmons?
Just referring.
Sure, make it, go ahead, make a referral, I know you have to leave.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have to leave, it's Holy Week, but I want to make a referral that we expand our crossing guards to include Emerson. So, we do not have crossing guards in the 5th Ward, our children are bused, they are crossing Emerson, which is a challenge for any of us, and I'm asking that we expand that service agreement with the contractor to include a crossing guard at Emerson, somewhere between Hartree and Hovland Court, that can help be determined by the residents that are concerned about their children.
All right, great, thank you, the city manager captured that, and thank you for, for being here for that discussion, Alderman Ruth Simmons. Okay, Alderman Revel, could you introduce for action SP2?
Sure.
That's in your, is that, that's in your word, right?
Right, yep. SP2, Resolution 39-R-19, for a temporary traffic signal at Central Street and Bryant Avenue during the Central Street Bridge construction. This is to accommodate safe pedestrian crossing at this intersection during the construction project, and this is for action.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing no lights, city clerk, could you take the roll on SP2?
Alderman Fleming?
Yes.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Alderman Wen?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Suffertin?
Yes.
Alderman Revel?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
I's have it. Okay. SP2, Resolution 39-R-19, for the temporary traffic signal passes, the Evanston City Council on a seven to zero vote. We're now going to move to SP3, Alderman Rainey, could you introduce that?
Yes. City Council Goals. Staff requests that at the April 15 meeting, that's today, that we discuss implementation of the 2019-20 city council goals, specifically the following topics: enhance community development and job creation citywide, and ensure city equity in all operations. Staff will present information on both goals mentioned. In addition, staff will present an open data report. The report will detail the city's newly formed data governance team, how it is aligning data development with the city's goals and industry standards, and providing a what works cities assessment. This is for action.
Is there a second? Great. Okay, city manager, did you want to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have three separate presentations. Let's start with the enhanced community development, job creation goals citywide. As you know, we have already shared with you some discussions on some of the city goals, we're going to cover two more tonight, then on, in two weeks, on April 29th, come back to you with a draft document with measurable results for all of the goals, including affordable housing. The council has spent a considerable amount of time talking about that, so we're not having a separate discussion on that, we'll incorporate the work that the council's already done there. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if there's any initial questions, Johanna Leonard, our community development director is here to get us started. Johanna, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bobekowitz, Johanna Leonard, the Community Development Director. I wanted to start off by, by saying that when we're going to talk about community development tonight, while I am the city's Community Development Director, we're, we're really thinking about small C, small D, community development, and, and how all the things that we do within the city contribute to community development. So, tonight, we'll have a few others from different departments. Ike Ogbo from the Health and Human Services Department, Kamar isn't going to be here tonight, but Lawrence Hemingway is, and then Neil Gambo, the Chair of the Mayor's Employer Advisory Council, will also be. So, what is community development? So, a, a search and a review of different definitions of community development yielded this one from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. I'm not going to read this to you, because I think it's, this has already been up, but the focus that I have found with this particular definition, that I think relates very well to Evanston and the work that we do in community development, is building stronger and more resilient communities. That seems to be, to tie well into some of the sustainability and resiliency work that we're contemplating and undertaking. And then, the community development activities that are enumerated here are things that, that we do, and the city of Evanston has done for, for many years. So, we created, as a group, we've, we've met a few times to talk about this presentation and the city council goals, we, and incorporating the comments that we've heard in previous discussions, we created this word cloud arrow visual to demonstrate all the things come together that include, and, and this, this is a paired-down version, but so many of the things that we do as a community, and then as, as an organization of the local government, feed into improving and enhancing community development and job creation. Any one of these things can be tied to those, those two efforts. So, we came to this, this clip-art graphic of what, where is governments, local governments' role in all of, all of this, in enhancing community development? And the ideas here were, these were, were some of the pieces of, of building a stronger community, a more resilient community, and how do we reduce some of the barriers that individuals might have in order to access things like transportation choices, safe and affordable housing, quality of place, that means a lot of things, a lot of different people. We work to define what those things mean, but how do we, how do we remove barriers that people in this community don't necessarily feel as though they have access to those things? Healthy foods, and employment and career pathways. And then, how do we measure community development? So, for several years now, we've utilized the STAR sustainability metric for measuring sustainability, and from, if you weren't aware, STAR has now folded into the U.S. Green Building Council, and it's, we're now a lead certified Silver community when we were a four-star community. But these were some of the metrics that we were able to measure community development and progress towards certain goals. And something I wanted to underscore on this slide in particular is not just program participation, or we had this many people sign up for this, or this many people do this, it's how many people participated in this program for a certain length of time, and there was an outcome that we can measure. And that's what, what some of these things are, are noting here. The, I think it's one, two, fourth down, demonstrate the percentage change between the jurisdiction's employment rate and the national rate is 10% or better, and demonstrate the percentage change between the jurisdiction's unemployment rate and the national rate is 10% or better. We got a partial credit for that in this last recertification, but those are the kind of things, while we may not be able to draw, draw, draw a straight line between our work and, and the outcomes, this is a good way to measure, and these types of tools are a good way to measure how we're doing. So, this, just recapture some of the groups within the city that work on community development on a regular basis. I won't read all of these slides, because they're available online, but focusing in response to some of the questions in the previous discussion we had about economic development, the city has released its economic development report, and the, the news is generally good, we're doing well. The, the fourth item down in 2018 accomplishments, 23 million in sales, liquor, hotel, liquor, and amusement taxes is a 7% increase between 2017 and 2019, 2017 and 2018. So, those are, while there's concerns, and, and there's always room for improvement, we, we are doing quite well. So, looking ahead, some key pieces of, of work are really going to focus on merchant districts. Last week, the city manager hosted a meeting of merchant districts and members that could come and talk about parking. It started off as just a general merchant meeting, but it turned into some, sharing some concerns about parking, and, and building those communication pathways to the merchant districts is really important. So, those, those business retention efforts and focusing on the individual merchants are a big focus for 2019. Transportation and mobility, our Purple Line and the Metro are the lifelines for public transportation, and, as well as pace to the, to the larger community outside of Evanston. So, how do we continue to invest in the Purple Line, working with the CTA? Also, the sidewalk gaps, where, where are places that we need more sidewalks? Looking at ways that we can better prioritize pedestrian safety, truck sideguard policy, and the transportation network provider dedicated stops. We have a lot of Uber and Lyft drivers in town, how do we better manage that, that congestion? Built environment, one of the big accomplishments of 2018 was the construction of the Howard Street Theater, many years in the making, as well as two planned developments that were approved in 2018. Our construction valuation is close to 375 million, and permits were 6.1 million. So, the number of inspections and, and number of permits issued was pretty stable from the previous year, but we, we continue to see that as a good thing for our stability. 2019 and beyond, further work with another theater, with Northlight, additional plan developments, and better establishing the links between land use and transportation. Climate Action and Resilience Plan, I think we all recall the adoption of CARP, and we recertified as a four-star community, and now we're a lead Silver community. But looking ahead, how do we do more to implement the, the CARP plan? And, and part of this is, how do we not completely separate sustainability and climate change issues from all the other pieces of community development and, and other city activities?
Good evening, members of the city council, Ike Ogbo, interim director, Health and Human Services Department. And I'm here to briefly discuss the highlights for GA assistance, and things that we've done as a department in job creation or job opportunities. So, in 2018, we partnered with Total Airport Services to provide recruitment and employment opportunities for qualified GA participants, and this is actually at the O'Hare Airport. And in order for a GA client or a GA participant to qualify, of course, they will have to pass the background checks, and of course, the hiring processes. So, what are we doing in 2019 and beyond? I'm delighted to inform you that we now have educational workshops on topics that are focused on healthcare, self-care, and money management. We've been able to partner with our community agencies like Howard Brown, Okton Community College, and YWCA in order to make this happen. And also, I'm happy to also announce that we've actually implemented the Community Work Program, in which we implemented on March 1st, and we've seen over 100 participants who have volunteered across the community, so I'm really delighted about that. And we're hoping that this opportunity will open doors for permanent employment for our GA participants. So, that's my brief slide.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Clerk Reed, members of council, City Manager Bobekowitz. Our role in PRCS in terms of focusing on older adults, we have our slide here. In 2018, you can see our accomplishments, where the expansion of the subsidized transportation program, you know, we went from our taxi coupon program and moved to a debit card system this past season. We, you know, we launched our volunteer-led, age-friendly business initiative, and what that was, or what that is, is that we had 23 businesses in Evanston that met or went through the survey and the criteria that were age-friendly criteria. And we were able, through our volunteers, they were able to go out into the community and certify that these 23 businesses are doing the things that they say to make them age-friendly. That happened in 2018. And the city funded our age-friendly affordable senior housing study. Things to look forward to this current year, training for older adults on how to use smartphones and the rise share, so now that we're out of the paper coupon business, we are really focused on getting our older adults on how to use the technology with the taxi program that we have now. Also, our goal is to certify 40 additional businesses as age-friendly, working with our group of volunteers. Again, the business has to, they get to self-select what the criteria is, and then our volunteers go out and hold them accountable to see that they're doing the things that they say that make them age-friendly. And we're also hoping this year to expand on our bridge housing subsidy.
Okay, and then, finally-
Director Ogbo, Alderman Rainey has a question?
What's the bridge housing subsidy?
Audrey Thompson, Ombudsman, City of Evanston. So, the bridge housing really does that. Bridge, the subsidy bridges an individual from having to pay market rate, and the city will subsidize a small amount until we can get them into a subsidized unit.
Okay.
So, we have a small amount of money.
How do, how do you get it? That's-
It's from the Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay, but how do we let somebody we know, who we believe qualifies for that, to access that?
They just called me.
But what, what is the, what is the qualification of the person?
So, a person has to either be dislocated because of even, of an eviction, or it has to be related to an adult protective services case, where they are-
So, they can't just be needy and be having trouble with their rent?
Well, that, that would like, I would need a whole lot more money for that one. So, it, it could be, because most times, the reason that they need some assistance is based on several different issues, and that's in addition to those two. If it's an issue related to property maintenance, and they no longer can live in their homes, then that's how we use the bridge subsidy.
It's an emergency program, really, right? An emergency program, basically?
Right.
Yeah, a crisis.
Exactly.
All right.
One more question, Alderman Fleming?
Well, I, I have a couple of questions about previous slides, if we-
Do we want to do those now, or should we do those when all the slides are finished? That was my question.
If we could wait till the end.
And then with a focus on job creation, again, what the question we worked through and tried to address is, what should the role of local government be in building the deeper pool of qualified individuals? And one thing that this slide tries to articulate is that there's a new economy coming, and the automation will change the way we have workers. There's commercial driver's licenses for vehicles that may be automated with autonomous driving at some point, maybe not tomorrow, but that could come, and how do we, how do we work within that economy? And the staggering data point down here is 65% of today's primary school students will hold jobs that do not exist today. So that holds to be true. That's the linkage between local government employers and schools is forever more critical. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Neil to talk a little bit about what he's been doing with.
Thank you, Johanna. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, wherever you went. And City Council, appreciate the opportunity here. Augmenting the talent pipeline for our local employers with a reliable stream of workforce-ready young talent not only helps them grow their businesses, but also, as importantly, helps them maintain what they already have in order to be able to grow their businesses. The Mayor's Employer Advisory Council, MEAC for short, is a three-year program designed to more closely align ETHS and local employers to provide pathways directly out of ETHS into good-paying careers that don't require a college degree. The goal is to get 100 ETH students, graduates annually, that choose not to go to college, into those pathways, along with returning graduates asking for career advice through the youth job center. MEAC is creating, actually, a workforce development community asset map under one roof. Where else can you find in one place, and communicating with each other on this subject, 31 employers, and that chart's a little off there, had a couple more join here recently, not-for-profit workforce development organizations, nine of them including the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership, ETHS, Oakton, state and local elected officials, the City of Evanston divisions, you know, certainly the youth division with Kevin Brown, and private enterprise. MEAC is transparent and welcomes anyone who has interest in this work and is something to add to the purpose and actions directly solely at this work. We have the capacity with this assembly to streamline workforce development for young people, to improve efficiencies and leverage private enterprise, community, county, and state resources to the benefit of our employers and our young people. And this council will sunset in 2021, and hopefully morph into a sustainable embedded element of community workforce development. Now, MEAC currently has 106 members. When you think about that, that's a lot of interested parties that really want to participate in things like job shadowing, things like explaining what an entrepreneur is. You know, that's, everybody thinks that's a really great deal, but, boy, it's got a lot of work behind it. Internships, paid apprenticeships, certainly developing in the high school curriculum moments where the businesses can come into the school and talk to young people when they're freshmen, and even young people in District 65. We're going to have to reach down that low, because as Johanna said, many of these kids in a few years are going to be in jobs that none of us even envision. The key element in the success of this work is the addition of the Career Partnership Manager we talked about a few weeks ago. Her name, we have a name. It's Tana Franzelno. That's her back there. Tana is the bridge between employers and ETHS. Her multifaceted role is to work with ETHS, oh yeah, we got it up there, to introduce non-college-bound, as well as college-bound, students to multiple career opportunities. You know, when you go to the school, you can't say, hey, if you're not going to college, come to this room. We're saying, come to this room and learn about it. And maybe they make a better selection when they go to college and come back to Evanston. She is aiding and molding curriculum and student counseling resources to focus on local career opportunities not requiring college and workforce readiness. She's leveraging the, or rather, yeah, she's working with local employers to develop clearly-defined pathways for students choosing not to go to college, at least not right away. She will be leveraging the direct connection with the City of Evanston, certainly with the youth organization, to guide young adults 18 to 24 into those pathways with local employers as well as the ETHS high school students. All of this should provide a steady, reliable stream of young people entering careers with local employers who need them. And if you don't think that's a return on investment by the employers, it is. It's a lot cheaper to get them this way than it is try to pluck them off the vine. Our work has tremendous momentum right now, with all involved, and looks to be very sustainable because of the intense focus we're placing on it. Employers we are met with are very enthusiastic about having this single point of contact to support their desire to connect with ETHS. They all think this position is a huge step in the right direction, as does ETHS. And I want to really enforce that, because we've sat with four of the big employers, North Shore, Presence, and a couple others. Every one of them says, you know, we've really been trying to figure out a way to connect with ETHS to get these young students, we just haven't found any way to work. This one looks like it's going to stick. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, the purpose tonight was to kind of share with you, oh, I'm sorry, are we? No, please, go ahead.
I'll be very quick. So this is just a reminder that we're doing a review of our social services. Kimberly Richardson, Deputy City Manager. And I just want you to know that the committee, the core committee that we will discuss in May at the Human Services Committee in Mordeff, have begun to meet to discuss social services. We are planning to do several meetings, meetings with both internal and external partners, as well as with the community at large. We will have more detail come forth at our, at the Human Services Committee, but I just want to remind the city council that we are looking at all services under the social service umbrella across three departments, which includes community development, parks, and rec, and community service, as well as health and human services. And the hope is that, no, not the hope, we will be providing you with performance measurements as well as reviewing our service of delivery. And so the recommendations that will come forth to the city council will then take us to the next steps of where we're going. We'll discuss this more in the next presentation, but we'll be using a racial, we are using a racial equity impact analysis process, which really changes the scope of how we're looking at programming. And what was nice about what's been discussed so far is that taking that process and using this as a pilot under the social services review will be then able to look at the other programs that have been discussed earlier today, as well under that same lens. And so we'll come back to city council in July with a final report. That's it for this portion of it. I'll be back in a few minutes.
Thank you, Kimberly. Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, I have a couple of different questions.
Got one last slide.
Oh, one last slide, oh.
It's just the slide that says next steps. So further direction on the focus areas, questions, identify other partnerships for the organization around these goals, and then the discussion we've had, and I think Hillary's going to talk a little about how do we measure these things? How do we measure our work?
Alderman Fleming, take it away.
All right, so I can just go down a quick list. So I would love to see the Star Lead metrics. You can just email that to me, or, because I know the star has changed. For the older adults, Audrey, can you just look into, I know there's that income requirement, I think it's 80% or something, and I've talked to a few older adults who, you know, aren't that low, but still don't have necessarily the funds for the handyman program. So if you can kind of just think through that, I'm not sure if we have enough money to change that a little bit. I have a question, or I guess a request for Kumar, who's not here. The solar installation piece for the commercial businesses, is it possible, maybe you can team with Citizens Green or Evanston or something, and do some kind of presentation around people who are interested in putting solar on their homes? I've had some residents who are interested in a little bit, you know, not really sure where to start, so it'd be great if maybe Kumar can help some kind of community meeting information session around that. My other one is for general assistance. Ike, I would hope, and maybe you're already doing this, but for your self-care component, that we're looking at mental health. I hope that's part of it. The volunteer piece, I guess I was interested to know if that was a requirement, and then the places that people are volunteering, are they volunteering there to get kind of job experience? Are they volunteering there in hopes that that's going to lead to a career? And I love volunteering, I think my only concern is if I look at the federal government and how they're changing some of the entitlement programs, that, you know, work or volunteer has become a requirement, and sometimes that is not necessarily helpful for a low-income population, particularly if we think about women who then have to put their kids in childcare so that they can kind of complete some kind of volunteer component in order to get whatever subsidy. So those would be my concerns of how we're using our volunteer component. And then lastly, for the, I think it was the transportation slide, I will continue to lobby for us to actually use our complete streets policy that we have. That means we will actually improve sidewalks as we're improving the streets. I know that people always call 311 about getting their sidewalks done or having their neighbor sidewalks done, and people either can't afford it or don't want to spend the 50/50, and it's a real burden when you have sidewalks that are falling apart, and it's the responsibility of the homeowner to repair that. And then also with the bus stops, as we look at, last year, we made some bus stops on Dodge accessible, but they still are not quite truly accessible because the bus cannot pull over to the sidewalk, we haven't removed a couple of the parking spaces, and then the stops are not real marked. So if we're going to be extending that, that we make sure, again, I know it's gotten late in the year, but we make sure that they're actually accessible stops.
Anything else for Johanna? All right, seeing no, seeing no lights, was there anything else before we take action on this item, City Manager?
Again, we're looking for general direction. So we are, we'll be coming back to you on April 29th with a proposed plan for this goal. We'll take the comments that were received this evening, and we'll come back on the 29th. Next would be the presentation from Kimberly Richardson, the Deputy City Manager, regarding the equity goal. Ms. Richardson, good evening. Sorry, I thought you were starting sooner.
Sorry, I was doing double duty today. Good afternoon, good evening, good evening. Deputy City Manager Kimberly Richardson. Johanna mentioned something about trying to reduce barriers, and the council made it clear that equity was something that they wanted back into the city council goals. And so today I wanted to go a little bit deeper, what does that mean? And unfortunately, I may not be in my view matrix, but what I would like to be able to convey is a plan of how we get to the goal of to ensure equity in all city operations. Equity is a process, and it requires patience, because it's really a change-of-theory concept that doesn't happen overnight. It requires an institutionalized change of thought, but it also requires leadership from all levels to buy into this process. So I will continue on, and I'm going to try to be very quick, because this is late. So we've all seen this picture, equality versus equity. And something that I've witnessed and I've observed is that I think we're still lost in the concept of what equity means, and we confuse equity with equality. And equality and equity sometimes, I guess, they are interchangeable, but actually convey significant different ideas. Equity is about fairness, whereas equality is about sameness. We are not interested in closing gaps by equalizing subpar results. That means we have to look at things in a different manner than we're accustomed to. And so that also means that the person who can have access without needing a support may not need it, may not receive it, but that allows for the small part of money that we have to give it to those who are much needed. What we see in reality is that the person that has access really is the one that gets the most support, whereas the person who has barriers are typically digging in a hole. And we're trying to change that with looking at, using equity as a process to change that reality. It is a process. I remind you, it is a process. So we are focusing on how to change that with racial equity. And I want to understand, I want you to understand that the focus on racial equity, you have to focus on racial inequity. Right now, race predicts how one, how well one does in life. And we, government, federal, state, local, we play a part in that. We're looking at how our education systems, housing, criminal justice systems, and so forth. And so in order for that to change, we have to change. This is institutionalized. This is not something that is anyone's fault, it's just that is how our system, our society has been raised, and so this is where we're at. And so what we're trying to do is with racial equity is to realize when race can no longer be used to predict life outcomes, and outcomes for all groups are improved. So even though we talk about race, it impacts everyone. Everyone will get access when done in this process. So I know some are very concerned because it's race-focused, but it's only race-focused because what we find, those who are put into the barriers, who have lack of access, the marginalized communities happen to be those of color. Either language access barriers, or those who are African-American descendants, African descendants who happen to live in communities that have black coats. So you may not find the laws in the books, but there are unspoken rules and practices that have embedded into our society. So again, equity is a process. In order to increase impact, we must normalize the conversation about race, organize, what we see organized to build staff, skills, and competencies, and operationalize and integrate racial equity into routine decision-making processes. It is both a concept policy tool and a values-driven public service approach. When we use racial equity analysis, we begin to place at the center of our leadership style and inform and authentic acknowledgement that barriers, barriers still exist, and bridges must be built for that. This is true democracy. We heard about this afternoon, this evening, where exceeding members of the community have said, we want a voice. Using this process is a way to have that voice done, but in a way that is purposeful and will allow for a process to proceed and decisions to be made. It is really an equitable process. So how do we get there? So this is just for framing of 2019, 2020. This is a long-term process. Speaking to communities that have been doing this work, it took them about three to five years to actually start seeing the fruits of their labor. And it really takes leadership of the city council. You are really what guides this. And the sooner we all understand the process and we do this work, the better we will all be in more direction we will have for staff to be able to follow. So we're going to do an organization assessment. We're starting with social services, that's our pilot, and from that, that will give us a blueprint on how to do the next steps of assessment. We need to develop a plan. We need to develop equity, a plan, but using the assessment as kind of the guiding principles of how to get to that plan. Training and operationalizing equity is key. How we do this, oh, we're breaking it down by, here's the recommended areas for us to look at, and this is commonplace nationally, this is just not for Evanston. Workface, workforce, contracting practices, organizational leadership, community access and partnership, data. You always have to look at data to hold yourself accountable and to continue improvements. It's not a static process. So action, the Equality Action Plan will require us to create a guiding principle or guiding statement. Currently, our statement that we have is very broad, we need to narrow that focus a little bit. Working with understanding where our community indicators are, we're going to be doing that using the social services process, so we will have a baseline indicators. But then actually having actions to understand how to get to the outcomes, and then how to measure those actions to make sure you're actually meeting your outcomes. Those are all going to be in part of the action plan. And then training. Training is integral, because again, we have to normalize this conversation. Both elected officials and staff will be training on understanding institutional and structural racism. It's not about the individual. I understand changing hearts and minds, I would love to do that, but unfortunately, don't know we have the capacity to. But the idea is understanding how we change the structure of racism within our own baked policies and practices. And then understanding how to use the racial equity tools. Now, this, of course, will happen over a course of Now, this, of course, will happen over a course of time. This is not going to all be a one-weekend training. However, we would love to see the city council have some form of basic training about equity first before we come back to social service review, so you have a shared language and understand why it's important and what we're saying within that document. And then training for staff, we're developing that process over the course of the next few months of what that will look like. And that will be correlating with the assessment. What are we doing? We are doing equity work. I want to make sure you understand that. We haven't done anything for the last few years. We have been training staff. It's been voluntary, so a lot of those who have been interested in participating have come done the training on explicit and implicit bias. Other trainings have been microaggressions, some of those things that are part of the conversation when it comes to equity. But now we need to make it really, again, we need to make this more not just about those who are allies and who wants to be advocates, but really understand that this is a philosophy and a principle that we all must share. So the Equity and Empowerment Commission is currently creating an equity framework, which will include definitions and some guidelines. Again, mentioning the social service review. Pauline Martinez, the Assistant to the City Manager, is currently leading the Language Access Policy Plan. Even though CARP has been developed, there's actually equity guidelines and principles within CARP. We're going to try to look through that to see how we can implement those. And our staff, these will be our equity advocates, are in the midst of doing a nine-month C training. And this is really about their personal growth, so they can understand the work. And this will help staff as we begin to train the trainer kind of conversations, so that we can make sure that we're hitting all departments and staff. That is what I have for you today. If you have any questions, I'm here to entertain those.
Well, thank you, Kimberly, for that very thorough analysis. Alderman Fleming?
I don't really have a question. I just want to applaud Kimberly. I know that for several years, I've kept talking about equity, and I realized I am not a teacher. I'm not even really good with laying out an action plan. So I really want to applaud that Kimberly was able to do her own personal education and really, I know she labored on that PowerPoint presentation, and I just want to applaud her. The thing I will say to add on to that is when we had the discussion on the Saturday about adding equity back in, I made the commitment, the council made the commitment of undergoing some training, and I have spoken with a couple of the national kind of training groups focused in government. Kimberly and I went to the National League of Cities last week and have a phone call scheduled with them. They've had some staffing changes, so we've had a phone call scheduled with them to talk about training. And then I will be speaking with one local person about training. So I will bring those back to the council, and we can, you know, it's the council to decide what the best training course is. I think one thing that Kimberly and I have talked about, and the City Manager will have to direct us, is obviously if we all get together and do some kind of training, there needs to be a public meeting. But these trainings also need to be a space where we can learn and ask questions. So I guess trying to just figure out how we do that with it being a public meeting without having a lot of disruption, so that we can actually learn in the training. So that's been the one thing that I've been trying to think through that I'll need the City Manager to lead on.
Terrific. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Anything else?
And again, my thanks to Kimberly. As I think most of you are aware, Patricia Feim, our Chief Equity Officer, has been off on medical leave. We hope to have her back the first of next month, but in her absence, Kimberly's done a tremendous job. So thank you, Kimberly, for that. And we'll continue to work on the more precise measures and portions for the document that will be back on April 29th. So we've talked a lot about implementing goals. I think in each of these presentations, you've heard a discussion about data. And this has been a project that we have been working on for several years, and we've not really had the opportunity to have a discussion at the city council about the work that we've done and the work that we are planning moving forward, and the exciting new partnership with Bloomberg Philanthropies What Works Cities program, which really is the gold standard of data collection among municipalities in the United States. Hillary Beatty, who many of you maybe have never met, but Hillary is our Digital Services Specialist. Hillary works in our Information Technology Division. Hillary, you've been with us now...
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years, and has, is responsible for everything you see on the web from us, but, you know, really, that's not why she's here. Why she's here is to help us sort through how to measure data, how to establish best practices, and she's here tonight to talk about that work and to talk about the work as we are moving forward with the What Works City initiative. Hillary, good evening.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bob Kowitz. My name is Hillary Beata, as Wally introduced me. Tonight, I'll provide you a brief overview of how the City of Evanston manages data, some of our ongoing initiatives, and what we plan to do in the future. So the Open Data Portal is at openeviston.org. We launched it in 2015, and then in 2016, we rolled it out to a new platform called Socrata, which is used by local governments across the country. And then in 2017, the city council passed an open data resolution to manage and formalize how we share and manage data, both internally and externally. So at Open Evanston, you can find more than 300 data sets and visualizations. We originally organized it by the Star Community Ratings, but there's a lot of flexibility in how we display this data. The goals of our open data program are to improve efficiency, align data development and sharing with the city's strategic goals and industry standards, lower the barrier to accessing quality data, and increase transparency of city programs and projects. So I'm going to talk about some of how our initiatives are related to these goals. So I work with staff on a regular basis to assess their data and determining whether, you know, how can we use it internally, as well as sharing it on the open data portal. Some of the engagements that I've worked on have been with police and fire, both for internal and external purposes. So with the fire department, I've worked with them for the past six months on creating a hub for all of their data sources, being able to integrate it in one place and provide a whole picture of fire operations with the assistance of two fantastic Northwestern work-study students, which, let's go to the next slide. This is a visualization from the fire dashboard. But with the assistance of two Northwestern work-study students, I was able to create this dashboard, and it really is incredibly helpful for the fire department to be able to really look at, you know, trends and being able to track different data sources for certification and being able to look at it at one glance. I've also been working with the police department to create an external dashboard of key data sets. We've done several iterations. One of the more recent ones was automating a lot of these key data sets. And then we're working on a current iteration that we hope to release at the end of this month that really provides, hopefully, a better format and context for viewing these visualizations. I also work with staff to train them in how to use the open data portal, as well as just general data analysis. So the way that we think about data is really led by the data governance team. So this is a group of staff members who are committed to using data to gain and apply insights to how we provide service. This group meets on a regular basis to discuss common challenges and shared goals for making data available for analysis and decision-making. And then we consider how to develop policies and procedures that work for all staff members. So the genesis of this group really was in our application for What Works Cities certification in 2017. We applied in 2017, and we received an assessment of our strengths and opportunities to grow. And we use this as our guide for 2018 for the policies and procedures we wanted to move forward with as a data governance team. We applied then at the end of 2018, and the What Works Cities Foundation saw the progress that we had made from 2017 to 2018. And so they've committed to working with us to achieve What Works Cities certification within the next two years. We've already started data engagements with them related to developing performance metrics for the city's strategic goals. We also will be hosting a training event for staff, as well as partners and other municipalities related to data storytelling, as well as performance measurement. And then also just receiving technical assistance and training from the What Works Cities team in our efforts to pursue data-driven local governance throughout the organization. So I also wanted to share that Northwestern did invite us to participate as judges in a contest where they asked students to visualize data about Evanston. And it was really just fantastic to see how the students were able to draw insights about the data that we have. And we are using that as an opportunity to collaborate the students, learn more about how they use the open data portal, as well as continue our relationship with Northwestern to work with their data-focused classes. So our next steps are to achieve What Works Cities certification. Our goal is that by the end of 2019, we receive the silver level certification, which is the first level of three that you can receive in certification. We'll continue to assist staff with learning how to use data in their daily tasks. And then we really want to be able to share more data with residents and provide that context and education about the data and the insights it provides, and also just learn from our peers and be able to implement the best practices as appropriate to our community. So that's it, but I'm happy to answer any questions now or offline, and thanks for your time.
Hillary, I have a few questions.
Okay.
So What's Work Cities, my understanding was that those were all large communities, New York, Los Angeles...
Correct.
Seattle. How does Evanston fit in that? And how many smaller communities are actually, have been engaged by the What Works Cities program?
Yes. So if we did receive certification, we would be one of the first, I think the first, of our size. We're in the range of 30,000 to 100,000.
I'm sorry, the first in Illinois?
The first of our, they've worked with Naperville, but at least of our size and of this recent round of applicants, we were one of eight communities that applied.
In the state or the nation?
In the nation.
In the nation.
In our size, so.
So 30,000 to 100,000?
Yes.
How do you see the, we've been talking about the council's goals, we've been sharing with the council, getting feedback on measurable results. Hopefully, on the 29th, or certainly thereafter, we'll have some measures we can use. What can you do to help the city council manage that information and help use that data to better manage the city?
So we've discussed, you know, the fire department, we created a dashboard that really provides that whole picture. And that's something that we would try to do here, is be able to pull these different data sources into one place, so that for the city council, you'd be able to view, oh, here we are in making progress in this particular performance measure. So we really have a lot of tools in place to do that.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, Wally beat me to it, but I was just going to comment that we are the best in the country of our size. And I was just going to congratulate you about how important that was and how impressed we must be. I mean, it's just so amazing. And I mean, this is just really something. And does our community know this? I mean, how can we get this out there? I mean, your presentation just now was just overwhelming. And, I mean, people can access this all over the city, right?
Certainly. And we've had, you know, we have shared periodically through social media this information. I know that we've had at least one individual in the community who started a Twitter feed known as Evanston Rats, using the data that we provide from the data portal to update the larger community on where we are with rat issues. You know, there's lots of data out there, you know. People seek it out, perhaps not only from our community, but from around the country, around the world. And so I know that we get inquiries from people from time to time about the data sets that we have out there. I think, Alderman Rainey, members of the council, one of the things that we've tried to do as staff is to try to put that front end to it. And I don't know if we can just go to the website for a quick second, and you could see how the data portal is currently...
I just did.
Is currently out there.
I mean, I just go to the regular website, and you don't, you know, this is amazing.
Openeviston.org takes you to the, to the portion of the website that has this information. You know, so let's go to, we've been talking about economy and jobs, why don't we click on economy and jobs?
I mean, you've got to get to that in order to be at Socrata.
You know, and then, so this is taking us to a portal of, that is on the Socrata servers. And so there are 2010, 2014 employment rate, 26, 2015 rates of income inequality. So there's various data sets. I don't know, maybe just pick one, click on it, Kimberly, what looks interesting?
And I would add that our goal is that we are putting more and more of these data sets on the website. We're working, this What Works Cities project team, it includes Patrick Dignan, who is, you know, our communications manager. So I think that will be key in really sharing with the public what we're doing data-wise.
And maybe we could show where we are with police?
Yes.
If we go to cityofeviston.org/polic. Because the Human Services Committee, I think, has been, you know, struggled with how we best present the information regarding police. And I think the police department has struggled with ways that translate how they do business, taking that information and making it more user-friendly for residents, as I vamp while she pulls it up.
I can show you the current iteration of the dashboard, which we realize is limited in how you would view it. Currently, it's several, it's the data sets laid out in this grid format. And our goal is to make it more user-friendly, where you're seeing these visualizations upfront. So I clicked on it, you're taken to the data set on Socrata, but what we have are visualizations of the data. So I'm going to open this next tab. And so in this case, and I should add that with any of this data that we're releasing, privacy is paramount. So these data sets are to the 100 block. They're not actually the addresses of where the arrests occurred. But you can see, just through this map, a couple of, just how the data lays out. It's by, from the last year. And then if you click, you would just be able to see, hovering over it, and then just how many arrests were in that spot. They can also show...
And the time element there was the last year, for example. So you could, there was a pulldown menu that you could make it, I'm sure, monthly, quarterly?
Yes, yeah. So I should add that I did this, I created this visualization, but the goal of an open data portal is that anyone coming to this would be able to create their own visualizations as well. And while we hope that they would have the appropriate context around that data, and that's something that we would work on, there's a lot of flexibility. There's a lot of ways that they can access the data, and that's what we want, so.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you will indulge us maybe for three more minutes, let's go to Honolulu.
Oh, yeah.
To the Honolulu side. So What's Work Cities has been working with the city and county of Honolulu over the last, what, the last year or so. And they have put together a dashboard, which I think really is, could very well be a good model for the kind of goals discussion that we've been having. So it's colored-coded. It has each of their goal areas, homelessness, let's see, reduction in percentage of homeless persons on Oahu, total number of people housed, total number of veterans housed, total number of beds utilized, affordable housing, units permitted, inventory of units. Why don't we click one to see the detail? So as Hillary said, I mean, part of this is visualization, part of this is providing data sets. And what Bloomberg Philanthropies did with Honolulu last, this past year, was to kind of do what we want to do, which is to have the visualizations that are as user-friendly as possible, so you can look, maybe go back to that main page, go back, you know, and see at a glance how you're doing, you know, using simple colors. But then if you want to know more, easily be able to click on, let's go lanes mile over paved. It's one set of data, 26.5 miles, the year-to-date target's 22, the annual target's 130. Bears program began in January, the cities were paid more than 2,000 line miles. So you can also put some narrative behind it in addition to the numbers. So I think this is the kind of thing that our goal is, once the council approves the measures for each of the goals, to have something like this. I think this is powered by Socrata or one of the other companies.
Yeah, it's actually proprietary to the Honolulu IT Department, but I'm in conversations with them to see if they can share it with us, so. with them to see if they can share it with us, so.
Okay, well, we'll send a snowball if they'll, if they'll send the, the data sets. So, Hillary, was that, was that, I think, the end of?
That's the end of my presentation.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor? Thanks for indulging us for a few minutes, we do want to talk more about this, I think it is very powerful, and we are tickled that, you know, of communities between 30,000 and 100,000, which there are several thousand, tens of thousands in the United States, that we are among a handful that are on a road, I think, to, you know, help our community better understand how we hold ourselves accountable using data. So, Hillary, thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
And that concludes SP3, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I know it says for action, I think we were just looking for general direction, so I don't know that a motion is necessary.
Great, thank, thank you, Wally, and thank you, everybody that got up and just presented. I think I speak for everybody up here when I say how impressed we are with the quality of the staff that worked for the city of Evanston and the innovative work that you're all doing, so thank you. We're going to move now to SP4. Alderman Win, could you introduce that, please?
I was caught up in the, this is Resolution 40R-19, amending city council rule, citizen participation by providing guidelines for public comment at standing committees of the city council. The Rules Committee and staff recommend city council adopt this resolution, which amends City Council Rule 6, by providing guidelines for public comment at standing committees of the city council. Planning and Development Committee will allow 45 minutes for public comment, and all other standing committees will allow 20 minutes for public comment. This is for action, I move approval.
Second.
Okay, is there any, any conversation? Seeing no lights, this is a resolution, so we can do a voice vote on this, all in favor?
Aye.
Is your light on? Alderman Braithwaite, before we take the vote, would you like to?
It's just a little bit slow on the uptake, it's been a long day. So, I was reading through this just earlier in the day, and one of the things that caught my attention, well, two things, I'm just trying to understand in action if we get to the point that we actually have to remove someone from the meeting. Am I looking at the right one?
No, that's a different one, this is the rule, this is the setting it at 20 minutes for public comment.
Thank you, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, so, all who has moved and seconded, all in favor of Resolution 40-R-19?
Yeah.
Any opposed? All right, 40-R-19 passes the Evanston City Council on an eight-to-zero vote.
You don't really keep track of that with.
It's on the wrong page.
Well, I can't keep track of that?
Just the ayes have it.
Okay, then the ayes have that unanimously. Okay, we're going to move to SP5, Resolution here. Alderman Wilson, could you introduce that one?
Yes, SP5, Resolution 41R-19, amending City Council Rule 9.6, committees to amend the start time for the Planning and Development Committee. The Rules Committee and staff are recommending the city council adopt Resolution 41R-19, which will amend this, City Council Rule 9.6, to amend the start time for Planning and Development Committee from 7:15 to 6:45 PM. It's for action, I move approval.
Second.
All right, seeing no lights, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like the ayes have it unanimously, okay. That's SP5, passes on an eight-to-zero vote. We then go to SP6. Alderman Fisk, could you take us to that one?
Yes, it's Resolution 43R-19, amending City Council Rule 6, citizen participation by providing guidelines of decorum during city council and standing committee meetings. I, it is for action, I move approval.
Okay, is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Fleming?
Sorry, yes, so, while I understand what we're trying to get with this, I do, I guess, agree with some of the speakers in terms of, you know, the more we limit people, the more, depending on the item, they are going to, they might get worked up, so some of the things, and I don't know that we mean to adopt the suggestion in whole, but some of the things, you know, in terms of having signs, I, I'm not a sign person, but Evanston is clearly a sign place, and if we have people who now we're limiting whatever hot topic issued to 20 minutes, and then, so, in, I'm on page, I think, 73, let me see where it was, one of the, the attachment that the city manager provided, one of the rules.
Alderman, I just want to make sure, so everybody's clear, so there was the resolution, and then the city staff included the Boulder rules?
Right, yes.
I think like the signs was in the Boulder rules?
Yes, exactly.
I don't think that's in our resolution.
No, I'm sorry, but it was referred to, and so, are we?
Is that what you want? The packet?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe a brief report from, from me.
Yeah, okay.
At, at the conclusion of your meeting last week, I was concerned that the council's rules did not provide any sufficient language dealing with decorum. In, in talking with the Corporation Council's office, doing some of my own individual research, what I put forward in Resolution 43R-19 is language that will, will add something to the rules now, in order to have, for the mayor or the presiding officer, to have some ability to have a speaker cease if they are in violation of this, of these issues. Further, though, I also provided to the council a much longer document from the city of Boulder, Colorado. I think we would all agree that Boulder has a community that is, is as engaged or more engaged than Evanston on a lot of matters, and I thought that there was much to be, be looked to, to the Boulder document. So, really, I'm asking two things this evening. One, I'm asking the council to consider 43R-19, I believe this is something that should be added immediately to the council's rules, but I also think that a longer discussion may be appropriate, and would ask the council, if you all agree, that we would come back at the June Rules Committee meeting to talk further about what is included in the Boulder document, and if it makes sense to take on additional revisions based on these additional items, that we would do that in June. But I, as your city manager, I'm here this evening to recommend 43R-19, I believe that the presiding officer, the mayor, needs the ability to, you know, have some criteria, to have someone, a public speaker, who would go beyond these rules, to have that be an opportunity that they would, would be able to stop speaking, and also to include not only the council, but the council's standing committees and ward meetings. I think that in my discussions with Alderman Rees-Simmons especially, she's been very concerned, that she feels she has no tool to try to bring what have become some heated discussions in her ward, to bring them to some order, and also, she is, is getting feedback from some of her residents who are unwilling to come to any future ward meetings, because they feel they cannot be heard, because the voices of a few become so loud and so angry. And so, I think as we look to transparency, as we look to citizen engagement, we need to be mindful that the loudest, most angry voice does not drown out other voices, and certainly, I, I think these rules, again, give the prerogative to the chair or the mayor, it's not something that's hard and fast, but provides a tool. So, again, this is a two-part request, one is the resolution, the second is if the council would like us to pursue other changes, that we'd come back to the Rules Committee in June.
Okay, so back to you, Alderman Fleming, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I guess so, there's several things in the Boulder document that I don't care for, so I'm not opposed to the city manager going back and bringing something back, but I, you know, I won't go through them all, but there's several things in here today.
Are you up for discussing that at the Rules Committee meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, but there's several things I don't agree with.
Got it.
But in terms of my other points, so these, these other things are fine, I think I would ask the chair of whatever committee, that as we're holding our citizens, I don't say accountable, but we're asking them to follow these rules, that we also follow these rules ourself, and then I do think, further down the line, if we keep up this amount of public comment that we do, you know, maybe we need to do some education of our own citizens, because I, you know, sometimes people come and they don't know how it operates, so they think there's going to be an answer to their question, or this is the place to come and, you know, ask about something else, so maybe we can just make sure we are educating people so they understand when they come here, it's only two minutes, we're not going to go into a long dialogue with them, so then maybe that cuts back some of the frustration, you know, with individuals.
Great, I can certainly make that statement at the beginning of public comment. Let's see, Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm, I'm glad you pointed out, because I think when I read this from my phone, I probably merged into the Boulder, so I'm trying to do this on the fly, and so, I can appreciate the need for decorum, I think we talked about this at the Rules Committee. What I'm a little bit hesitant about is, when we first started this conversation several months ago, we were really focused on council, and now we've sort of come all the way back over to the residents, and I'd like to see us land somewhere in the middle, and I, while I'm speaking, I'm trying to read, somewhere in there, I read about the police removing a resident, and I just can't recall if that was in the Boulder, or if that was a part of what we're proposing this evening.
In Boulder.
It was in part of Boulder, thank you.
So, pages 70 and 71 are the only two?
Thank you.
Are, are the points there.
And so, I'll just be honest, I, I was here for Mr. Gibbs, and if I was sitting in Alderman Rainey's shoes, I can, I would understand how disturbing the conversation was, I cannot recall if he was being threatening, though. He was being loud, and Mr. Gibbs has a very powerful voice, but I can't recall if he made any threatening remarks, and so, I would be honest that there have been other residents who have been extremely threatening to members of council, and what they've stated they would do, whether it's attacks on the city manager, attacks on Alderman Fisk, I mean, we can all go down the line, I just, I guess before we take action, I would like the opportunity, I don't know if you said this, Alderman Fleming, just to have a little bit more community discussion. I regret that I wasn't here for the public comments. We didn't talk about it, no one made a comment about it, okay, okay. So, I hope that there's, I just hope there's a little bit longer discussion at another point versus just taking a knee-jerk reaction, but, again, I wish I was here for the public comments.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite, Alderman Fisk, and then Alderman Win.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to comment quickly about, we, from time to time, I've talked about civility, and we, I've tried to address this at my ward meetings and start discussions about it, and I, I want to make sure that the discussion about civility doesn't sound like we're being un-civil to anyone, I mean, it's, it's, it clearly, we, we've all experienced angry, angry voices. I have been really concerned, though, having watched city council for a whole lot of years, that something is happening over the past couple of years, and my concern is that a lot of the people that I've known to be very, very reasonable have expressed to me their reluctance to come and speak at, at council, because of the way that they've been treated in this building, by very vocal advocates for certain positions, and that has extended not only throughout the building, but into the parking lot, and, and I, I don't really know, and maybe Kimberly is a good person for me to talk to about this, but I don't really know how we address that, and how we bring a sense of civility back to our discussions in this, in this building. My ward meetings, when I have the folks, the advocates come and they want to yell at my ward meetings, I've been very lucky that, that others at my ward meetings ask them to be quiet, they respond back, and it sort of settles, settles it down itself, and that's a good thing, but I think there, there is a real sense in the community that people who want to express themselves on issues feel less inclined to do so because they feel that they're under attack, and that, that doesn't help, that doesn't help us, that doesn't help our conversation up here, it doesn't help them feel better about being in the community, it's a serious problem, but I think it's something that we can resolve, it's just a matter of how we go about it. So, that's my point.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Win?
Well, I, I, I've been reading this, looking at this, and having, I, I would agree with Alderman Fisk, I think the tenor and the tone has changed over the years, and I think that we have, at different times, had, and it wasn't just the prior meeting where I wasn't present, but we have had this issue where we have someone who has been disruptive or disturbing, and there hasn't, and the mayor has not had a tool to use, and has really been left with no ability to, to exercise something from our rules. So, I, I think that this is going to be rarely, if ever, used, but I think there have been times, and it wasn't just recently, but in the past, where, I know Mayor Tisdale was really left with no tool to use, and so, I think that this, this is not going to be invoked very often, but I think it's worth having, and I agree that I think we should let people know what, and if you can do that, mayor, or if we can post a sign to let people know, what, what's, what is citizen comment? You know, citizen comment is a one-way, just one-way speech by someone, and the council is barred from responding, if you have questions, here's what you should do, you know, so.
Yep, I'm happy to make that statement.
I'm also urging people to submit their comments, because they would be responded to, but I, I think that this is fine, I think Boulder, I, I'd really like to know the history of how Boulder arrived at all of those rules, so, but, but I, I think this is fine for us to go forward with, Boulder obviously has some other things going on.
Well, thank, thank you, Alderman Win. Seeing no, no more lights, this was moved and seconded, this is Resolution 43R-19, amending the city rules. Number six, citizen participation by providing guidelines for decorum during city council and standing committee meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, the ayes have it, SP6 passes the city council. All right, we're going to move to call the wards, first up today is Alderman Fleming.
Thank you, just a reminder, I have a ward meeting on Saturday, this Saturday, at 9:00 AM, over at the Levy Center, this will be a chance for me to address the residents of the ninth ward and hear their concerns. Also, just wanted to send my well wishes to, to staff in the park, the recs department who have taken ill, so just wish them well in their recovery.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At my last ward meeting, there were actually two issues that, that came up, they've been reoccurring issues, and I think I read it, are we having another Robert Crown meeting focusing on the financing? Did I read that, city manager?
Yeah.
I'm looking to partner with one of my members of council, if, if they're hearing the same conversation about, and I know we've had many sessions and many conversations about it, but there's still a population of residents that are out there, and a few attended my ward meeting, and the two issues that came up, taxation, just again, as we learn more from Cook County, to be able to update our residents, so that was one issue, and then, there's still some confusion with Crown, and I don't necessarily expect to convert anyone, but when they're at a meeting and throwing out large numbers, it tends to be a bit confusing for some of the residents, and so, if there's someone who's interested in partnering to have another meeting just to discuss it, I'd be willing to work with them to do that.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman Win?
I, I, I don't have a comment, but I would urge all of us to go ahead and Google Boulder citizen decorum, at least we have, don't have anyone deciding to undertake citizen comment nude, so.
Not yet.
That was one of the sources of issue there, so.
Don't be giving Google.
No, 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 okay, it's a little too chilly here.
You mean our rules don't prohibit that?
Yes.
All right. All right, Alderman Sefanen? Alderman Ravel? Alderman Rainey?
I'm going to ask the commercial owners of property in my ward to pay attention to the eighth ward message board, I'm going to be putting together a meeting for them regarding the new assessments that have come out, not sure of the date yet. regarding the new assessments that have come out. Not sure of the date yet, but it'll be before the 29th of April.
Terrific. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson, could you lead us into executive session?
Yes, pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. This agenda item is a permanent subject to be considered in executive session, and the enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. The exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A and C11.
To your second.
Second.
City clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Alderman Fleming.
Yes.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Wayne.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
All right, on a, what do we got, eight, eight to zero, on an eight-to-zero vote, we are going to recess into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.